Black's home in the mail.
Black's in the mail, okay. I would like to remind everybody, as usual, that we are streaming live. And with Ustream this evening, all microphones are live. So, just in case you happen to say something that you would want the nation to hear. Okay. Kim, would you bring me up the signup sheets, please? Thank you. I don't know if any of you know this, but Kim is going to be furthering her education, Kim Button, our city secretary. And with that said, she will, Friday will be her last day. So, we're gonna have a little get-together for her at City Hall. If you're interested, let us know. And, of course, we'll be talking about it later in the meeting here, though, but I'm sure everybody has grown to know and love Kim. Thank you. Would want to remind anybody, please, who has, is there anybody who would like to speak tonight that didn't sign up? We have a, of course, an agenda back there, if you'd like to see that. And we have a non-agenda items of people to be heard. We have one person signed up for that. So... Okay. This is the City of Castle Hills on June the 13th, 2017, a regular city council meeting at 6:30. I call the City Castle Hills City Regular Council Meeting to order and insert the time at 6:35 and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. And for the invocation, we have from the Castle Hills Christian School, right here in Castle Hills, Pastor Michael Pinkston. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Let's go to the Lord in prayer and open this thing up. Heavenly Father, we just come to you in the matchless name of Jesus, and I just want to thank you for just the opportunity that we have to bless this meeting within its ambitious agenda, to just ask that these council members would just have the mind of wisdom and just discernment for how to lead this city. I want to pray over Mayor Howell and the other council members. I want to lift up particularly Ms. Scott and Ms. McGlynn in a special way, God, in their first meeting here. I just ask that you would give them wisdom beyond their years and thank you for their energy and their passion for this community. And I just pray that their greatest days of serving our city, Lord, would be before them, not behind them. And that the collective weight of wisdom that is gathered at this desk tonight would just give right judgments and good understanding and take care of the great people of this city. We lift up our police and fire officers and just thank you for their care and watch care over us, our city staff, all the way down to the, just the friendly people, the way they pick our trash up, just so amazing. And just bless them all, God. Just give us, as citizens, the opportunity to give honor and respect to these folks for their service. And you give them wisdom, and we'll just depend on you for the best years of Castle Hills to be just out in front of us. So, commit this meeting to you in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, Pastor. For the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to ask Laverne Jappett, one of our legendary Pledge of Allegiance person. Laverne, would you cite the Pledge of Allegiance for us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Laverne. I hope one of these days they'll ask me to do that. Okay. Let's move on to acknowledgements and recognition. We have in item 2A, a proclamation for MDA Fill the Boot Fire Department. Mr. and Mrs. Robert Meek? Meek? Wonder if you'd like to come? Yes, ma'am. Kurt, would you like to explain this item, please?
Yes, Mayor. Every year for the past six years, our fire department selflessly stands at intersections with a large firefighter boot and helps the MDA raise money. This year, they raised $4,508. This brings a grand total for the past six years to $30,600. Please join me in applauding the Castle Hills Fire Department for their service. Thank you to Chief Dover and your department. Nothing you do goes unnoticed. And...
Do you think you...
On behalf of the City of Castle Hills, I would like to give you this proclamation. Whereas the City of Castle Hills professional firefighters are tempered and most time-honored American ideals of a service to protect the citizens of our community and a tragedy on our home front. And whereas the City of Castle Hills professional firefighters members are highly trained and dedicated individuals who demonstrate daily an extraordinary caliber of courage in the face of danger. Now therefore, I, Mayor Howell, Mayor of the City of Castle Hills, would hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 23rd, 2017, that the Castle Hills professional firefighters will fill the boot.
We're presenting the MDA people.
Right. So, this is the, this is the proclamation now.
We have a son with Duchenne muscular dystrophy, and he passed away about three years ago. So, we pour it to muscular dystrophy for how long a year?
The City of Castle Hills and firefighter members successfully donate their time and energy fighting for kids involved with muscular dystrophy, ALS, and related life-threatening diseases that severely limit muscle strength and mobility, causing them to grow. So, with that, we would want to award this proclamation to you, and thank you very much for accepting that for the MDA.
Thank you.
You do?
Fifty.
Fifty years?
Fifty stomachs.
Sixty years of this year.
Well, you're sixty years. Thankfully. What street do you live in?
Harvard.
Well, good. Thank you so much for accepting that on behalf of the organization.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is item 2B, which is recognize Vicki Beaver for the certified court clerk, Level One. Vicki Beaver has been here with us and one of our wonderful court clerks. Vicki, please come forward, and we want to recognize you for your hard work in obtaining Level One certification of a municipal court clerk.
Vicki, this, as you know, this certification program has three levels, and it is not a mandatory certification. This shows the motivation and commitment Vicki has to this city. So, Vicki, I congratulate you on your Level One certification. We are looking forward to seeing you again past your Level Two. Thank you very much. I spoke to Vicki last week and asked her what her ambitions were in the future as far as what she thought she would be able to accomplish in the next couple of years. And she, her goal was to complete the whole level process and hopefully stay with us. And we will make an opportunity for her. Thank you so much.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is 2C, recognize Fire Captain Harold DeHart for his many years of service. I would like to ask Captain DeHart to come forward and recognize him for his 36 years of service.
This is a resolution by the City of Castle Hills, number R217-06-13, a resolution commending Harold Hart for his 36 years of loyal employment in the City of Castle Hills and honoring Harold for his faithful and dedicated service to the residents in the City of Castle Hills. Whereas Harold DeHart began his service to the City of Castle Hills Fire Department January 1st, 1981. Whereas in 1981, began working in the Fire Department as a firefighter, emerged to captain in 2004, and made the fire service his lifelong career until his retirement June the 30th, 2017. Whereas Harold DeHart has always faithfully performed his duties in the outstanding manner and has been an invaluable member of our Fire Department. That the City recognizes Harold DeHart and the 36 years of his service to the community. That the City of Castle Hills, along with its citizens, wishes to thank Harold DeHart for his lengthy service of the City of Castle Hills and congratulates Harold for attending the success that he has worked so hard to achieve. A copy of this resolution shall be read in full in the minutes of the meeting at which this resolution is enacted, and the original bear up subscribed by the members of the City Council shall be presented to Harold DeHart in gratitude and appreciation of the people of the City of Castle Hills. Past this day, adopted on the 13th day of June, 2017, signed, "Tinkeye Howell, Mayor of the City of Castle Hills." Council, would you like to acknowledge Mr. Hart? Let's give this to him.
I'm a captain of the City and myself. It's a parting gift to take with you on your retirement, even though now you don't have to track the time too much anymore. It's been great, and I just can't say enough. He's done a lot to bring me up through my career. We were both much younger men when I started with the department, and Captain DeHart and I were both firemen then. And I can't thank him enough for the wisdom that he's shared with me, the things that he's contributed to our department. It hurts me to see him go, but I'm, again, happy that he's got to enjoy a great career. He's gonna get to spend some time with the family, and he won't be working too much further away from us. He's actually retiring to become a deputy fire marshal for Kendall County. So, he's actually going with one of our other retired captains and followed him up there to do some fire marshal work. So, he's not too far away, just like Chief Reedle, who just recently retired. I've got his number on speed dial, and I'm sure I'll be calling with questions and looking for some answers when I need them. Thank you, Captain.
I'm gonna have a picture with the captain, please.
My wife, Joanne, she's, what's held us together, you know, it's not the job as a firefighter, it's the wife that stays home, takes care of the children and stuff. Every Thursday, she is by herself. So, I really appreciate my wife. My son Greg, who is lieutenant with the Shawano Park Fire Department, so he's keeping the Fire Department thing going, and these are his three children. And my daughter Lauren, who came to us from Austin, here with us tonight. I really appreciate all their support and their help. You're the 10th mayor I've been through.
I assure you, Captain DeHart and I go back many years, some I'd like to tell some of you. But as a young man, thank you so much for your dedication and also your wife. People don't realize when these gentlemen in our Fire Department and our police come to us, they, there's one night out of the three that they're not at home with their family. And I know that means, your family means a lot to you. So, with that said, thank you.
I just want to thank my fellow firefighters that came over here, all of C-shift, and the captain from B-shift is here. And I thank you guys for the support. Appreciate it.
Wow, we got a list tonight. Next, we have on item 2D, recognize Police Captain Johnny Siemens from graduation from the FBI National Academy. It's FBI-N-A-226. Tonight, we're actually recognizing Captain Siemens, who graduated from the 268th Session of the FBI National Academy, June the 7th, 2017. Captain Siemens is the second Castle Hills Police Officer attended and graduate this program. This is the most sought-after elite training within the law enforcement community where most sought after, sorry, I don't have my glasses on, where less than 1% of those who apply get accepted. The FBI National Academy consists of 10 weeks of intense training in executive leadership, management, and trends in law enforcement. This takes place up at Quantico, Virginia, at the CIA facility there. Will you join me in applauding Captain Siemens for his hard work? I'll turn it over to Captain Siemens, where he can provide a brief summary of the experience in Quantico.
Mayor, instead of me speaking on behalf of Captain, I asked him to give a brief overview on his experience up in Quantico, and I think he might have put something together for you guys.
It's real brief. Good evening, and citizens, council, city staff. Real, this, almost at a loss for words, this seemed surreal that I was able to attend this and subsequently graduate. As such, you can imagine, I was extremely humbled upon arrival. Chief and I had many conversations early on to that effect. Many examples, I recall, sitting in a classroom for 10 weeks with Baltimore's Second-in-Command or the Capitol Police's Second-in-Command, numerous chiefs from across the country, and then considered 27 other countries were represented with some of the brightest leaders in law enforcement for their countries, to include Germany's Second-in-Command for their State Police Department, and Albania's Anti-Terrorist Director, individuals such as that. Very humbling. This is how I shared the last 10 weeks. Worth noting, as an entity, we all share similar issues and concerns. Many include recruitment, retention, generational differences, and certainly adversarial officer fatalities. Equally worth noting, we all shared many of the same passions, integrity, trust, community partnerships, and the like. In addition to the academic aspect, there's a physical fitness element and requisite levels that have to be met prior to being selected. Once there, almost daily CrossFit workouts culminating in a 6.1-mile run with the obstacle course. As, upon completing that, you receive a yellow brick from the academy. It only took me two days to get mine, I'm happy to note. I'm just kidding. Not quite two days. Without argument, one of the greatest attributes of this opportunity has been the networking. The aforementioned contacts, all 227, are phone call or an email away should the need arise for Castle Hills. I thank you again for this opportunity.
I can't, Johnny, I can't tell you how proud I am to be standing up here with you today. We have two people, Chief Davis and also Johnny, and this, to be able to go to this academy up there is a big deal. They, like I said up there earlier, they take what, 1/10th of...
1% anyways.
1% of the nation, and it's not a political type of appointment or anything like that. It's a, it's an appointment that they earned every bit of it. And we have two right here in Castle Hills, and we're lucky to have them. And I'm very proud today to be the mayor of Castle Hills and also to be involved with two gentlemen of the caliber that you two are.
Thank you, sir.
Okay?
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. This is, next item is 2E, is recognize Corporal Jose Davila for the graduation of the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association leader. Corporal Davila is our most recent graduate from the Trilogy of Leadership Training. Castle Hills Police Department hosts this class, where we are proud to announce we have nine officers graduate from this program. Please join me in applauding Corporal Davila for his hard work.
Thank you, Corporal, for your hard work. For those of you who don't know, we invite these, this leader group here, and we put a curtain from there over here, and of course, my office is up here at the desk, and I learned a lot too about it. Now, I assure you that I will be out in the spirit of protecting you like I will. Thank God. But with that, I would like to give you this award acknowledgement, and thank you so much for your participation in that program. Captain, do you want to say a word for Captain?
Real briefly, and to sum up the mayor's comments, annually for the past three years, we've partnered with FBI LITA. And this is, again, a premier executive law enforcement training provider for police leaders. Any individual who successfully completes this trilogy receives that pin as well as a plaque, which is currently being shipped to our agency. Many of you may have noticed the current plaques that we have outside in the display case on the, I guess, north, northwest wall. To date, we've had eight graduates of this trilogy, and before the close of 2017, we will see the third trilogy completed. And Corporal Davila makes the ninth graduate, and we're very proud to mention that to you all and to have him receive that award tonight. Thank you.
Captain Siemens? Captain? I think it'd be good to let the audience, let the citizens know why we have this program, how it benefits us and how it came to us, because if we didn't have it in our facility, I doubt very seriously we would have the opportunities that we have.
Thank you for the opportunity for us to elaborate on that. Chief has reached out to these folks to consider us as a host site for the training. If not, we would spend approximately $650 per applicant to go to that training. As a result of hosting here, we're typically allotted five free slots, and that enables us, unlike many other cities, to put a majority of our officers through that training. And it's unparalleled training. It's almost on par with the FBI National Academy. Great leadership training for our officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. For those of you who don't know how this process works, I did want to point this out. So, this next item is item 2F. And it's the recognition of Mayor Howell for his dedication to the City of Castle Hills. Now, when these, when these items come in from council members, I do have the ability to, unless two members have brought these forward, to pull them from the agenda. And I thought that I was gonna pull this item from the agenda because it, I guess, before, within five minutes after it was posted, I had five or six people call me, my friends for a change, and tell me how self-serving this is. Well, I want to let you know that, when you have two council members who have brought something forward, you cannot pull an item from the agenda. So, I thank you, Amy and Moretta, and then I'd like to say a few words after you.
Since February, when we threw our hats in the ring for this crazy adventure that we have started, we learned that Mayor Howell has a great dedication for our city. He has a love for Castle Hills that flows from his body every time we've met with him over the last few months. But we have observed a few things, that he is missing something. So, we have purchased him a gift, and we've written a limerick. Here is our limerick for Mayor Howell. There once was a mayor named Tim, whose passion for the city fills him to the brim. We thought it a pity he had no tool to run the city. So, we bought you a gavel, so you don't have to haggle when a council meeting turns grim.
Wow, okay. Let's see what we got here. Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, this is, I guess we hit this one here, like that. Well, thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. And for that poem, I don't, it sounds like, like that Jack Frost, or whatever his name was, Frost. Yeah, so thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to take this opportunity, though, to, the reason I didn't call these girls and tell them, "Pull that immediately," is because it gives me the opportunity to really thank the people and to recognize the people who make this city relevant. You know, it, you know, the leader of the city is only as good as the people around him and the residents who support him. And with that said, you have the best of the best. We've proven that this evening with the people that have gone to Quantico and come back and passed with flying colors. We have a fire chief that is second to none. In fact, when your supervisor upon his retirement refers to him as the best of the best. I don't know if you remember Top Gun, but I do. So, we have, we have our council, who walked us through trials and errors of this year with some very unpleasant times, and then some very positive times with moving forward with our infrastructure and things like that. And I want to let you know that in these meetings that go forward, they spend many, many, many hours. In fact, those jobs take a lot of their time, a lot of their extra time, and those are the true, those are the true people we should recognize tonight. We have one... We have one that we're going to leave, Kim. We have a lady that basically runs our office during the day, and sometimes she's in there by herself, because we have, you know, so many employees that have been here such a long time that they take vacation time, they need to take vacation time. And this young lady, Kit Kowalski, you know, runs the show by herself. But those are the people, and Chief, I'd really like for you to stand and be acknowledged, the two chiefs. Also, we have our captain there, we have Wayne Wagner, who's the backbone of a lot of our ideas and our new fresh ideas that come forward. Tina, Vicki, the other day, the judge told me, they're basically our court clerks, and our court runs like clockwork, and as you can see, sorry, guys, as you can see by our financial report, we're doing pretty good in the court. Okay? But last of all is the residents, you being here. Because without your residents, I think many of you have heard this before, I was born here. And the fourth picture up there on the wall there, Mr. Hartman, I told him I'd have his job someday. Well, here I am, and I'm ready to give it back, but that's a joke. But seriously, it's allowed me to live my dream in Castle Hills, my 63 years in Castle Hills, and you, the resident, have allowed me to fulfill my greatest dream. And that was to serve this city and to give back a little bit what the character that was built here. So with that, thank you, girls.
Councilman Scott McGlynn, do you mind, since this is your agenda item, if I make a few comments? Okay. We need to lighten this up just a little bit, don't we, with this big love fest going on? So, I'm going to take the opportunity, I heard a story this week that I felt like the residents needed to hear. There was a lady over on Fox Hall Lane, Mayor, put that thing away for just one second, please.
I was just seeing if it worked.
Who tells me that she was in her front yard, she returned from walking her dog, and there was a doe that had just had two fawns across the street, and when she walked up, it literally attacked her. And then boom, out of nowhere, here comes, in a flash of blue, this tiny blue car rolls up, and this man pours out of the car and puts himself between her and this deer and says, "Get in the house, get in the house," and literally engages in hand-to-hand combat with the deer. And Mayor Howell's out on the streets, patrolling the streets, rescuing residents in distress. So, he is faster than a speeding resident in municipal court, stronger than the rushing waters of Danube after about a one-and-a-half-inch rain, and able to lead small ordinances in a single bound. And I thought it's only fitting that we present him with a gift here. Mayor, come on down. So that he is properly attired when he's out there rescuing damsels in distress. Now, Mayor, I don't think biscuit is big enough, you can't put this on until after you get out, all right? So, to our super mayor. No, he didn't. The prosecution rests.
Thank you, Kurt, and I wanted to let you know that I knew nothing about this, honest to goodness, I didn't. But I want to thank you for, wow, that's some big shoes to fill there. And I just want to let you know that if a deer does happen to attack somebody, get out of the way.
Thank you.
Well, as I frequently like to say, how about them cowboys? All right. The next item is Citizens to Be Heard, and it is on non-agenda items, and Judy Crawford.
Hi, good evening. I'm never really sure where to sign up. I'm not really talking about an agenda item, but it's kind of an agenda item. So, anyway, I'm on a traffic committee, and we thank Mayor for assigning that so that the citizens can be heard with problems and things that go with the traffic, and so I wanted to just comment a little bit about that. I want to thank everybody for being here and for acting really quickly on some of the recommendations that the committee made, which will be the agenda items tonight, which are 10 and 11. I did want to say that our committees only have the opportunity to meet one time, and while we feel there is more work to do, that these two items are a really good start. But our committee is anxious and needs to know what basis the school, the church, and the Christian schools' final traffic plan is, so that we can continue to help protect our neighborhood. And we are very eager, as a committee, to meet again and soon, so that some of these matters can be settled. For example, some of the members are not in agreement with the use of just using cones to control exiting out of the church property, and members are concerned with leaving the exit closest to West Castle Lane open. Some people want that totally closed. And the committee would still like to see no parking signs going up on North Winston as well, and those weren't included in tonight. We would also like to be sure that all the businesses on Northwest Military are made aware of the traffic that is coming their way. So in conclusion, while the ordinance is tonight, we feel are a really good start. The city and traffic committee do need more information from all the parties, because we still have a lot of work to do in a short amount of time to help protect our neighborhood. And this was added afterwards, because I happened to drive through the church today at about 3:30, showing my dad around, and I did not know if we are aware that they are cutting trees and clearing some land behind the gym.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Just so the public, and you can also speak during the agenda item too, I went ahead and moved your name down to that, okay? I also wanted to let the public know, in case they didn't, that on non-agenda items, the council cannot respond to those, so if there's a silence up here, it doesn't necessarily mean that they agree or disagree. And I'm sure that when agenda items come up, that they'll be commenting on that, but please don't think because of council's silence that it wasn't taken as for what it is, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. What this is, is this is the agenda that is put together, it generally has things that are bookkeeping, housekeeping, and usually, it could take a long time, but we put it together in the form of a consent agenda. And I will ask anybody at this time, do they have anything they would like to pull to talk about off that agenda? Douglas, which item?
Can I just generally talk about the total items, or have I got to specify one?
Well, I mean, if you have a question on all the items, that's...
That's an observation, not a question.
Okay, observation, okay. Hang on. Amy, which item?
On Item A, I have some substantive corrections to the minutes.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Mr. Trevino, Scott? Okay. All right, let's go. Douglas, I'm going to save yours to last, if you don't mind, because it's an overall, I believe, substance question. Item A, Amy?
All right, for Item A, I have several substantive changes. The first one, if the city secretary could go back and look at Number 2, Executive Session, the time that that started, it's listed at 6:49. And I'm not sure that that was the case, because then Section 3 says we convened an open section at 6:49.
Thank you.
Then also, on Page 7, or under Number 7, Regular Agenda, under the Open Public Hearing, the following individuals spoke against the project, and the following individuals spoke in favor of the project is listed. However, I also spoke that evening on the item, not for or against it, and so my name is missing. All the other 30 people are listed. And if you would check the time for the closing of the public hearing, and when city council retired into Executive Session, those times looked funny, and I didn't have a chance to check the video. Then the last one for that one is on the next page at the top, and I can't recall from being at that meeting if the language should be presenting the new information to the ARC, reporting back no less than, or I think it was no less than 60 days, if you'd just verify the language on that next page right before the vote. And that was all on that one.
Thank you very much. I'll comment on that in a minute. We'll pull it, we'll pull it.
Several years ago, I had the reason to go back and check the minutes of about 30 and 40 years ago of various councils to determine a point going on in the city. The minutes at that time clearly showed what council members were thinking about and discussing on a point, and if anybody showed up, it was discussed there too. Whoever does the minutes in the future, these are very inadequate. You just don't list 20 or 30 people and say, "They spoke against it," and leave it at that. You've also done that to various council votes, you just simply say four to one, unanimous, or whatever. You've got to flesh out these things when somebody's going to come back somewhere in the future and wonder what the council thought, and to simply say, "Well, just go check the tape," may not, there may not be a tape 20 years from now. But I think there ought to be a far more in-depth review of what people are actually saying in these minutes. It's too late to change them, I think, to that, but in the future, I would very much appreciate it, and I think future residents of Castle Hills would appreciate it also.
Mr. Paul, I know you're worried, you say some.
Yeah, just a quick question. I think council voted to present them in this manner in the past, because we did have the video, and I think we determined that word by word, verbatim, minutes were not conducive to what we were looking to do. Now, what I would ask our city secretary to do is go back and find those minutes of that council meeting that we had to determine if that was the case.
Counsel, because we've brought this up, and I think some of you know this, and because it's an item that we had spoke about in the beginning, we're going to reach out and do some internships, and if you know of somebody who needs to do an internship, please let us know. And we're also going to enhance our volunteer program here at the city. And what that means, as far as this particular item is concerned, what I would like to see is, you know, back in the old days, we had a parliamentarian. I don't know if many of you remember that, but we did, he sat right there. He was, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh picture up there on the right, his name was Perry Burnham. And so that gave us an opportunity to free up some of the time and be able to work back how the work was handled back in those days. Now it's 90 miles an hour with our hair on fire. Okay? So I would suggest that council, when we talk about something during council comments, which we're going to bring up regarding meetings that we're going to call, and they will be open to the public, but just some brainstorming meetings, and I haven't run this by the attorney yet, but I'm sure we will, but where we actually post those meetings and let people come in, and we do some brainstorming. So I would like to see some of this happen. Douglas, thank you for pointing it out. Kim, thank you for the never-ending job of the minutes. I don't see how you do it.
Mayor?
But thank you all. Yes?
I have one more change to one other set of minutes.
Okay.
On the May 9th minutes, Mr. Bracenio's last name is spelled incorrectly. If the city secretary could go back and check that, I think that was the only other one.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda with the corrections made by...
We have motion on table by Mr. Paul. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Douglas. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, council. Let's move on to the next item, which is Item 5. It's Presentation and Acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2016 Audit and the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report prepared by Armstrong, Vaughn, and Associates PC. Mr. Vandewalde, did you want to explain this to the public, please?
Sure, we did, we had our annual audit, as normally performed by Armstrong, Vaughn, and Associates. We have Ms. Debbie Fraser here with us tonight, who is willing to enable to discuss it. She conducted the audit, she and her team, and she should be able to answer any questions, and staff's available as well. I would also like to point out, Mayor and council, that those of you who only received the digital packet on this, there is now a hard copy of the audit on the dais in front of you, if you want to refer to it during the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Vandewalde. And I did want to comment, thank you for the 181-page digital packet. I'm sure that all the council read through every single page. Amy, I know you did. Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Well, hopefully, the audit was the most enjoyable part of that 181-page packet. Again, my name is Deborah Fraser, I'm with Armstrong, Vaughn, and Associates, and we did perform the year-end audit for fiscal year December 31st, 2016. Your audit resulted in an unmodified opinion, and that means that after adjustments, your financial statements are fairly stated and materially correct. I do realize that there are quite a few new council persons, and if you have any questions after the meeting, I'm going to invite you to give me a call, and we can go over the format of the audit. But basically, it's broken down into a management's discussion and analysis, and this is basically from management's point of view, and discusses the statements of financial position and the statements of activity, and then a little more detail of your economic factors. And then there's a financial statement section, which we prepare. So I'd like you to turn to Page 13. We're going to skip the statement of net position and the statement of activities. Those are shown on a full accrual basis. I'm skipping those because they're probably not as informative as you would, or, well, they're informative, but they include your fixed assets, your debt, compensated absences, and your net pension liability. And I just think it's probably more beneficial for you to go over the financial statements in the way you prepare them, which is the modified accrual basis. So you have a full accrual basis, a modified accrual basis, and then we reconcile the two. So your balance sheet is on Page 13, and at the end of the year, your total assets for all governmental funds were 11.4 million. Of this, nine, almost 9.6 million is in your general fund. You had a little, or about 8.6 million in cash and investments of that 11.4 million. Your total liabilities at the end of the year were 1.2 million, almost 1,269,000. You had deferred inflows of resources. This is basically your property taxes that have not yet been collected, as well as the property taxes that you've levied for future periods. So you had 3.3 million, almost 3.4 million in total deferred inflows of resources. 3.2 million of this are your property taxes levied for future periods. On your fund balance, I want to point out the unassigned fund balance, which is the third item, or third line from the bottom, it's 3,61,290. This basically makes up 6.4 months of operating expenditures. You did increase again your street maintenance. You also used a good portion of your street maintenance that was committed. I know that seems to be something you always want to discuss. If you turn to Page 34, this is the Schedule of Revenues and Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balance, Budget to Actual. So you actually budgeted total revenues of 6,322,000. You actually brought in 6.5, almost 6.5 million, so you had a positive variance of 168,406. Your sales tax, actually, you brought in 45,000 more this year than you budgeted, and then you also had building and permits that you brought in about 144,000 more than you anticipated. On your current expenditures, you budgeted 6,196,000. You actually spent 6,340,000. You actually spent six million three hundred and forty-five thousand. The overage here was in, mainly in capital outlay, which was some of your streets. I'd like you to turn to page thirty-seven. We, we talked a lot last year about your net pension liability and the related ratios. There's a couple numbers here that I'd like to point out. The first number is that your planned fiduciary net position as a percentage of total pension liability, so this is your asset compared to your liability. Last year, it was eighty-nine point four, almost eighty-nine point five percent. It's the third number, third set of numbers up from the bottom. Last year, it's eighty-six point three, and this is a determination as of December thirty, thirty-first, 2015. So they are a year in arrears. But if you look at the numbers, I'd like you to look at the net investment income. So in 2014, you had seven hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and forty in net investment income, but because TMRS changed some of their assumptions and their investments, sold some investments, your net investment income went down to twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. So really, the difference in your percentage or your unfunded liability was a result of that net investment income. We've seen this in every city we audit, and you really have no control over it. So I just wanted to point that out because I think that's one of the more important aspects of the audit this year, or a highlight. I know that was really quick, and again, if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them, but otherwise...
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah. I'd like to ask our treasurer something here. I'm sure, there's no doubt in my mind, he has the answer. Douglas, we passed a law several years ago regarding the excess income, and I notice we aren't broke here after all. So with that hundred and sixty-eight thousand, we designated that to infrastructure, and we also, is that a hundred percent law, or what did we do on it?
Up to four hundred thousand dollars.
Up to four hundred thousand dollars. So folks, what happened was the council that was sitting up here at the time, not me, okay, these, these gentlemen, Frank, Douglas, J.R., and whoever else was up here at the time, were, they, they ran this budget to the point where we have a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. We passed a law several years ago. I believe Douglas and I were on council then. It basically says, any overage up to four hundred thousand dollars goes straight to the bottom line on infrastructure. So that's unanticipated money, and Douglas, thank you for your, for your being our treasurer and for also enacting that law years ago. Okay. With that said, Deborah, thanks a lot. Let me see if they, anyone has any comments? Douglas?
What was the surplus again?
I don't think it's only based on your surplus. It's also based on the operating income that you have at the end of the year.
Right, so not, it's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand plus forty-five, so it's around two hundred grand.
That right?
Right.
Well, you had a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, but...
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, but you also, if you look at, it's based on the operating, the number, the amounts of operating income. You had six point four, and so we took the total four hundred and moved it down because it was over the six months.
And here.
Oh, sorry.
So the total amount is?
It's a lot of money, brother Dooley.
Four hundred thousand.
I understand. Thank you. We'll turn it up. What, as I said, it's a lot of money. We'll turn it up, though. Let's turn it up so we can hear.
One thing to note for everybody, in the budget, SAWs took up the slack of over two million dollars in infrastructure repair for the city last year. Now, that is a big, big plus, positive for the city, which expects to go forward in future street and drainage income. We had a seven percent increase in revenues in the city, as I read it, which I think reflects a good econ, a very, very good economy for us. You have a comment in here, in, that we have no encumbrances. Can you give to the audience and to the council the pluses and minuses of having encumbrances? First, tell them what an encumbrance is.
An encumbrance is a, basically, a savings for the next budget year of money that you've budgeted that the project has not been finished. So, you know, I, there's a lot of pluses to encumbrances, but I think for your size of city, that encumbrances may not be as useful. I think it's easier to budget annually and then analyze it on a per, per-year basis.
I wouldn't mind talking with you afterwards with regard to deferred compensation, because I'd like a little more understanding of exactly what we're doing.
Deferred compensation of your compensated absences and PTO?
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There was a line under here that I think needs to be explained. It says, "For the purposes of this communication, professional standards require us to accumulate all known and likely misstatements identified during the audit, other than those that we believe are trivial, and communicate them to the appropriate level of management. Further, professional standards require us to communicate the effect of uncorrected misstatements related to prior periods on the relevant classes of transactions, account balances, or disclosures, and the financial statements as a whole and each applicable opinion unit. The police department has control of a separate bank account that has not been recorded on the city's books since its creation. Due to the omission of the account in previous years, revenues are overstated by ten thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars in 2016." Further on in, I guess this also statement, you also mention of, "There is an account in the city police department's name that has not been included in the financial statements of the city in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars." Are there two accounts or one account?
There's one account, and at the beginning of the year, the account balance was ten thousand six hundred, or six hundred and fifty-five dollars. At the end of the year, the account balance was the twelve thousand. So when we adjusted the financial statements, because we did include the cash on the financial statements, we put in a beginning balance, so that's a prior period adjustment. We had not recognized that in prior years. It was below materiality, and that's why we did not do a prior period adjustment.
Is having, is this unusual, or is this commonplace among cities that accounts aren't brought to the city's attention, but because they're too small?
It happens. It, it does happen, more than I would like to say it does, but small cities usually will have some accounts that they've been using throughout the years, and every once in a while, they pop up on confirmations.
Do we have any idea how long this has been going on?
About twelve years, I believe.
Twelve years. How much has been the total accumulated over that twelve-perioded time?
I did not go back twelve years.
Chief, do you have an idea how much has accumulated over those twelve years of unreported income?
It's been stacked as far as I know. I inherited that account in 2013, and if I remember, it's always been around ten, twelve thousand dollars as far as I know, 2013, I know.
So is this dovetailed into the general account now? This, this count had been closed, and those funds now in the general account?
It has not been closed. It has been, the accounting is now being recorded. Bank reconciliations are now being prepared on a monthly basis, but until the, May, actually, I should, should go back a second. The bank statements had been given to the finance person this past year. However, the receipts and the deposits had been kept in, at the police department. Now we're moving everything over to the police department. But as far as, I, I audit twenty-six cities, and we had this occur at another city, so it's not as rare as you might think.
Finance department?
Finance department, yes. Did I, I'm sorry, did I? Yeah. And so Suzanne has began, began reconciling this account. Now, there is not much activity in this account. It's, you know, I think most of the, the activity this year were deposits, which are from the POP machine.
Well, that raises the question, where is the money coming from?
POP, POP machine.
Vending machine.
Oh, vending machine, sorry.
Do you think it's a good, do you think it's a better idea to close this account and simply put the assets in the general fund?
Well, it depends on what you plan to use that money for. It's, I think the police department owns the POP machine, and so they purchased it. I, I think it's the intention of council and the police department to decide that. I, I really shouldn't make any management...
Would it, would it be a good idea to have it as a line item in the next budget?
There's so little activity, I would say probably not.
Okay.
Miss Laney's income, I'd pop it in there, but I don't, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul, did you have any questions or comments regarding the item?
Yes, a couple of things. I read the same thing that Mr. Gregory did, and I was just curious. So I went and asked questions, you know, dumb thing to do. Apparently, this is a coffee fund that we've had forever, and I'm just curious, when we, you, you saw it or reported it this time as opposed to prior times, why was that?
Well, because we didn't know about it prior time.
How'd you find out about it, I guess?
It came back on a bank confirmation.
Okay.
So somebody at the bank decided to put it on the confirmation, and...
Well, okay. Well, I also understand, now, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know you will. You had receipts. The process has always been, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, the process has always been that if you expended fund, first of all, let me ask, is this the same fund that you were asked by administration a couple years ago to buy the turkeys out of? Okay. So it's not a hidden fund, it's not a fund that nobody knows anything about. Now, as I understand it, the receipts were in the, kept with you because that's the way it's always been, and nobody's asked you, and once you were asked to give the receipts, you have no problem with that, since the statements go into the finance department anyway. Am I correct? Okay. See, I, it's, to me, it's a coffee fund, and I understand that a couple people have even donated some money to it for coffee and stuff like that. So are you used to having coffee funds at offices being on the financial statement?
No, but you also don't have that bank account left at, under the city's name at a bank, at, at a bank, because you insure your funds, and that may or may not be included in the FDIC insurance, and kind of like your account three or four years ago with the police forfeiture funds. You know, at that time, we said, are there, you know, are there any other accounts? And we were told, no, at that time. So, you know, any account that's in the city's name with your tax ID number that should be insured, should be included on your financial statements. If you want to collect and have a coffee fund, I would say you probably don't want one that's twelve thousand dollars laying around.
Right, well, they've been collecting the funds, and, 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 quite frankly...
It's good coffee.
I, I believe, I believe that he's been frugal about it, probably too frugal, but he did buy turkeys two years ago out of it when he was asked by administration to do that, and I think that was very, that was good. Let me ask you, do we have any other funds? Does fire department have a coffee fund?
The, fire department has a fund, a food fund, and those are on the financial statements, yes.
Okay, and so...
It's, it shows up as not only an asset, but a liability.
Well, again, bottom line on this, I understand that the fund's been around forever, never been a problem, never been a question, you stop me anytime, and the financial statement, I mean, the statements have always gone into the finance office, and the receipts are always available upon request, and now she's decided she wants to keep them in there, so the receipts are going once we spend the money. Am I on track here?
Um, kind of, sort of. I, I think she started keeping the bank re, bank statements last year, or three years ago. I don't think she kept any receipts. I don't believe she...
No, she didn't keep the receipts then, yeah.
Right. She didn't ask for them, and she didn't do anything.
Right. She didn't ask for them, so she didn't, but now she's asked for them, and now she's getting them.
Yes.
No harm, no foul.
That was, that was done before we left.
Okay. I have another question on something else, if I may.
Okay, sure.
On page six. Did the state change the law on some of this retirement funds and how they're reported? Because you have a hundred percent increase there, a hundred and twenty-five percent increase between 2015 and 2016.
Yes.
So, so they changed the accounting, the way they counted?
The state, the state changed some of their assumptions for TMRS. However, two years ago, remember, we were required through GASB-68 to put the, that net pension liability on the financial statements. Before that, you saw it in the back of the book, but you didn't see it on the financial statements. Now we show it on the full accrual financial statements. And, you know, yes, you did have an increase. I kind of shortly went over that. It was on page...
Six.
Thirty-seven, though.
Oh, thirty-seven.
If you look at thirty-seven, this is a comparative of the two years, and the bulk of that change really occurred with the net investment income going down about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars from one year to the next.
What'd you say? I'm sorry, your, the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That microphone wasn't that good.
If, if you look on page thirty-seven, that line item, net investment income, it went from seven hundred and forty-five thousand last year to twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-one thousand this year. It was a result of the state selling some of their investments that they had and how they recognized them, so, yes.
So it basically is a change in the reporting function?
Not, not only, no.
Not only.
They had, they actually had a loss on their investments.
Okay.
And you all receive a GASB report...
Right.
On an annual basis. It usually comes in July. So if you want to see that report, Suzanne or Kurt probably can give that to you.
Thank you.
But again, it was, it was a loss on your investments.
Okay. Well, I don't want to go over this whole report because it's, the numbers are boring to me, I'm sure they are to the audience, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Paul. Anyone else? Amy, do you have a...
No, nothing.
Ms. Scott?
Uh, Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir, thank you. Ms. Fraser, is it standard to have so much money in cash?
Well, it depends on what you're going, you mean as far as cash versus investments?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it depends on the city, and it depends on the current investment atmosphere out there. Textpool right now, Textpool logic may not be paying large interest rate or interest percentages, but if you want to go with treasuries, I know Douglas has quite a lot of experience with treasuries, so you might, you know, look at those various items, but that's not, you know, that's kind of a management decision.
I'm just curious from what you've seen in other cities.
I see a variety. You look at some, and they have investment accounts. A lot of cities use Textpool and Lone Star, MBIA. I see city stairte, stair-step CDs. I have some cities that won't invest in anything except cash at their depository bank. So it's kind of all over the spectrum. It also depends on what projects you have coming up and how you expect to spend that money in the near future.
Okay, thank you. I have one last question.
Sure.
It mentioned that one of our, I think it's our financial officer, was missing a training. Do we know if that's been completed already?
It was Suzanne, and I know as of May, she had not completed it, but I know she signed up for something, I believe. Okay.
Okay, if we can just check that out, I want to make sure that we're in compliance. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one more question and an observation?
Okay.
I've used as a rule of thumb, as long as I've been city treasurer, that we should have six months' reserves in the account for a city of our size. Do you feel that is prudent?
You mean in cash?
Yes.
Um, I'm not going to say it's not...
Cash or, or similar cash equivalents?
Or cash equivalents. You know, you certainly want to look at how you're going to spend the money in the next year and, and how your money's coming in through your tax base. So for instance, if you don't have a specific amount of money or six months... So, for instance, if you don't have a specific amount of money, um, or six months of, three months of operating and it's October, um, I'm sorry, uh, July. Uh, July typically, from July to October 1st is typically low in tax collections. So, I don't know that necessarily six months, you may want to look at two or three months and analyze how your, um, tax revenues come in on a year-to-year basis. Sometimes they come in real quickly and sometimes they don't.
I have one final question. Are the, does the city have any unfunded liabilities? And if so, what are they? And if they are there, how do they compare to last year?
Net pension liability is an unfunded liability. And again, on page thirty-seven, um, your, uh, unfunded liability basically went from 1.6 million up to two point, almost 2.2 million. And again, I think that's going to turn around. You had a really low investment income in 2015. I believe in 2016, it picked up quite a bit. Um, but I would look at your, um, GASB-68 report that comes out in July.
Now, the ratio between the unfunded liabilities and the assets to the city, are we in a safe ratio?
Very good question. Um, the GFOA says that anything above seventy percent is a good ratio to have. You have an eighty-six point three. It did go down that, um, you know, really three percent during the course of, um, 2015, but you, you're very well-funded. The cities in Texas are really not having the issues that, for instance, Detroit and Orange County and those cities have had because TMRS has been relatively conservative.
Since this increased, it looks like twenty-five percent? In one year? I just am a little queasy that we might, if we're not, if we're not paying attention to what's going on, suddenly see three, four, or five billion dollars as an unfunded liability for a city our size three or four, five years down the road. And, um...
Well, well, actually, if you look at last year's, um, you had a net pension liability, um, in the prior year of 1.6 million. And it did go up to 2.1 million. But again, if you look at all of your, um, numbers on page thirty-seven, you're really going to see the only real difference is your investment income. And, um, I know that, uh, TMRS has sent out alerts in 2015 and 2006, well, 2016, discussing those changes to the investment income.
Nine years ago, ten years ago, no, I guess seven or eight years ago. The stated, when we had the Great Recession, the state fell into deep arrears as to how they felt they could fund the liability of state employees' retirement fund. And they assessed cities across the, the state, a lot of money, and we were, I forget what it was, we had to pay. Has that stopped yet? Or are we still paying an assessment and if so, how much?
Oh, I don't know exactly how much. You're, you know, you, they went from the full rate to the phase-in rate and you're currently paying the full rate, which all cities are, they did away with the phase-in rate.
You have, you don't recall how much it was?
I think it was, I can't recall what your city was exactly, but I, I know it was, um, between a one and two percent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas, Amy.
I'm not sure if this is a follow-up question or more of a comment now, but today I attended the Alamo Area Council of Governments newly elected officials' training and one of the sections was financial statements, et cetera. Um, and the financial director for City of Live Oak, um, in the discussion of how much to reserve, you know, in case you need that rainy day, was to save six to twelve months' worth of, worth of your operating, your monthly operating expenses. And I think earlier you said we have six point four months' worth of operating?
You have six point four months of operating. Um, we, we as, I guess, the GFOA, not we, but the GFOA has gone a little more conservative. It used to be three to six months. Um, they're slowly, um, raising that. They still are saying six months, but they're not saying six to twelve. But most of the cities are trying to prepare for some of that. You, you may have, well, we won't have a hurricane like Galveston, but if you remember, um, seven, five years ago, they had a large hurricane. They weren't able to pay some of their bonds. So, you want to always prepare for that rainy day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLennan. Okay, we go. Uh, now, I have a quick question because it was just brought up down the, down the table there. Um, when, when a person or a company or whatever, uh, uh, gives money to the city and it happens to be, uh, an elected official involved in that city, okay? And they, and they pay into a, a certain account in that city. Is, like, like, let's say someone would have a GoFundMe account for the, uh, animal shelter, okay? A personal account for the animal shelter that goes straight into that. Or, is, is the city or that individual in liability to report that to the city? That account exists even though it doesn't name the city in that account?
I guess I'm not quite sure, I don't quite under, sure what you're saying.
Let's say somebody had a GoFundMe account that basically said, this, this account is for the, uh, Castle Hills Animal Shelter.
Well, I would check your, with your attorney. I think there may be some liability issues there. What if that person did not take it over to the animal shelter?
Even if they were an elected official of that city?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, I'd just like to know because I don't like small places, you know, so... We have a lady sitting on the front row, actually, that's donated to that fund, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
For, yes?
I move that we accept the audit report as presented.
Glad somebody did. Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah, I'll check with, uh, my legal counsel, okay? Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is, uh... Item number six. Consider an act upon the recommendation from the Architectural Review Committee regarding an application from Antonian College Preparatory High School located at sixty-four twenty-five West Avenue. Legal descrip, description CB-5005A Block Eight Lot One to remove, uh, three oak trees from a small grove of eight oak trees located directly in the front of the standing facility, currently under the renovation and repurposing to the new Center of Academic Excellence. For clarification, this is a tree removal portion of the ARC application. Mr. Vandewalde?
Sure, Mayor and Council, those of you who only received the digital packet now have a hard copy of the application package on the dais in front of you. Additionally, Jack Joyce, who's the Chair of our Architectural Review Committee, could not be with us tonight due to a separate engagement and he's provided the council with a written recommendation and that has also been placed on the dais in front of you. Um, and we've got Ms. Kathy Walker here with us tonight. Would you like to present the, uh, application for the tree removal, please?
Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity. Um, we, um, we are asking for approval to remove three trees from a grove of eight oak trees. Um, just to set the stage a little bit to let you know, um, this facility was built in the late fifties, early sixties. At that time, those trees were just little saplings. So, to the best of my knowledge, they're probably about sixty years old. Let me just get to where I want to go, okay? So, this is a photo of the trees and going from right to left is, um, tree number one, two, three, four, and five share a trunk. Tree number six is a standalone and then seven and eight also share a trunk. What, the trees that we are proposing to remove are tree number one, two, and number six. Now, the purpose to remove the trees is because we would like to build a front-facing stairwell to replace the antiquated one that we current, currently have that, uh, exits out the, on the side. Uh, Mark will talk about that later on the second proposal, I am just, uh, requesting for the tree removals. This is a view looking down from the landing of the, the center. Um, so again, moving left to right now would be one, the tree we want to move, remove is tree number one, two, and six. So, I'll start with tree number six. This tree, um, has several gashes in it and it is growing, it's straight towards the building. It already is practically rubbing up against the building. That is a portion of the tree that is hanging over the, the landing of this current stairwell. And that's the side stairwell that I spoke of earlier. That tree right there is tree number two. That basically is a branch. You can barely call that a tree, it is growing straight towards the building. Take a look at where I have that circle there, that is the top of that tree. That is the top of that tree. It's basically just a pointed end. It will not, it has no canopy, no, no branches or anything. And there is another photo of that. That is tree number one. Its growth pattern is growing, because it isn't getting any light, it's growing very low to the ground towards the building. It also is damaged and could be a liability for us in the future. That's just another photo of the trees, kind of showing their growth patterns. So, my final, uh, exhibit or presentation is I sought the advice of a certified arborist who actually gave us a, a letter, came out, walked the, the area with me, looked at the trees and, uh, and gave me this letter. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to read it out loud for the benefit of our audience. Mayor? Okay. I'm, I'm going to read the letter, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Sorry, I was looking at the...
That's okay.
The thing here.
So, um, the arborist's name is Brian Dunlevy. He's with the International Society of Arbicultural. He's a certified arborist since 2010 and, uh, he's with San Antonio Tree Surgeons. He visited the school on May twenty-sixth. So, he starts out, "Myself and Kathy Walker examined a construction project occurring at a building south of the main entrance. We looked at the drawings for a new sidewalk to be installed at the building entrance. I have a strong background in construction. Looking at the drawings, I see what Kathy is requesting. I one-hundred percent agree with Kathy. I have some strong opinions to support what Kathy is asking for and here is why." So, we're going to look at my photo there so that we can refer to the trees. Kathy is asking to remove three trees from the group that are in question. I will use her photo with the tree's number to ident, to identify and give a common sense approach with experience to justify removing the tree. I will work from left to right using the supplied photo. Tree number six, it is the closest to the building. The branches and foliage are growing very close to the building. It also has been hit multiple times by equipment at the base of the tree. A large gas, gash exists where the bark and cambrim are exposed. This is a serious wound and should be considered. I therefore strongly suggest that somebody install TPCs, tree protection zones, something that is wrapped around the tree base to prevent further damage from the equipment. Just, I want to interject something here, we, we do plan on doing that, um, when we remove these trees and when we do the stairwell construction, if it is approved. Tree number two is very easy to ask for a removal. It has a large cavity in its main trunk that although has healed nicely, it is deep, it is in a bad spot on the trunk and will most likely cause tree failure and the cause for the oak to snap at the wound. With foot traffic, this is a liability. Tree number one is although a healthy tree, is another tree I can support a case for removal. It is growing directly into the building, the limbs are scarce. The only branch structure is growing directly into the building, literally inches from touching the structure. If a hard trimming occurred, I think most of the tree's integrity and overall structure would harm the tree. To the real possibility of failure. Sun refraction from the glass due to, due to the proximity should also be considered. Lastly, I understand the need to preserve trees. I also look at the campus, they have some areas, especially along the street, with some really, really special live oaks that are being maintained very well. They practically have a forest of heritage live oaks in exceptional condition, unspoiled, completely preserved. Trees that are crowded will be stressed due to competition for moisture and nutrients. Trees that are too close together may develop leaning or lopsided growth and be weak and unattractive. This is the case with the grow of, of eight tree, of eight, eight oaks in question. In the big picture, removing the three smaller oaks that will be problematic, in my professional opinion, is a small price. The remaining trees will have a better chance to develop a lovely form and will be easier to maintain. I truly believe, looking at the drawings, that the school is trying to preserve and save the other oaks that are better species and have a better chance to adopt, to adapt to the new building. Sincerely, Brian C. Dunlevy."
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
We have a, well, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and get a, uh, a motion in a second that will go into discussion, please. Have a motion for this item?
I so moved the motion.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, okay. With that said, um, we're going to go into discussion here. And before we start, I'd like to read a letter, uh, from Jack Joyce. Jack, are you here tonight? Okay. Uh, on the report on the, uh, Architectural Review Committee meeting, which was held June the seventh, two thousand seventeen. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, please accept this brief written report of the ARC meeting on June the seventh, two thousand seventeen and note in the minutes of your meeting. Uh, Antonian School application, second meeting with Antonian. The request, the main agenda item was a reconsideration of the request divided into two parts from Antonian High School. Uh, they wish to construct a new entrance stairway in front of the newly renovated Center for Academic Excellence. The first part of the request is for the removal of three oak trees proposed to be removed in order to make room for a new stairwell. The second part was consideration of the stairwell itself. Uh, discussion, the citizens who spoke were all in favor of the project. Some complimented Antonian for its modifying their design to save some of the trees, even though they had spoken against the project in previous meeting. ARC members also complimented Antonian on the revised design and the extra effort and expense of designing the sidewalk in such a way that it would maximize the ability for rainwater to get to the roots of said trees. Uh, the decision by the ARC was, the motion to recommend approval to City Council for the removal of the three trees was approved unanimously by four members present. Signed, Jack Joyce. Uh, oh, uh, vote for the stairwell construction. The motion to recommend approval to City Council for the construction of the new stairwell was also approved unanimously by all four present. Thank you for your consideration on these thoughts, Jack Joyce, Chair, Architectural Review Committee. With that said, we have a motion on the table by Mr. Gregory, a second by Mr. Trevino. Mr. Gregory, we'll start on your end, did you have any discussion or questions for Ms. Walker?
Have there, what were the material differences between what was presented last month and this month with regard to the trees?
Well, originally, we were asked, we were asking to remove the whole grove of eight trees.
I'm sorry. Originally, the request was to remove all eight trees, uh, and the front-facing stairwell would come in, directly in that path. We listened to what the residents said, we understood their concerns, and so, uh, we adapted our proposal to, to try to address some of their concerns. And in doing so, it allowed us to save, fought, basically, five trees.
Thank you. Douglas, uh, Mr. Paul, did you have any questions or comments regarding the item on the table, please?
I just appreciate, uh, the ARC's comeback on this, it's a little more definitive than last time. And, uh, I've walked that school over there two or three different times, so, I'm sympathetic to what you're saying. Plus, my wife said, "Let it go." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul and Ms. McLennan, did you have any questions or... Ms. McLean, did you have any questions or considerations for the item?
No, I was at the ARC meeting last week, and I appreciate the extra effort, so thanks.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Ms. Scott, did you have any?
Thank you so much for working. I was over there today, looking at the trees and looking at the construction, and thank you so much for the compromise on this. It's a beautiful, a beautiful program here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir. Ms. Walker, this is the second iteration for this, correct?
Pardon?
This is the second iteration. Y'all have gone through and saved one trees, and then y'all come back and save more trees.
Right.
So I wanted to personally thank you for that. I understand that it's been a difficult process, but I think that we can all agree that this is a substantially better plan.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. On this item, thank you, Ms. Walker. We're going to go into citizens to be heard, please. Okay, with that said, we have one, two people signed up for this item. If there's anybody else, please let me know. Gerald Flores. Mr. Flores, would you step forward, please, and give us your name and address, please?
Mayor, you want to note the time that this public hearing started?
Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, we are, we are opening a public hearing on this item, and it is now 8:02. Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor Howell, members of the City Council staff. My name is Gerald Flores. I am a resident of Castle Hills. I live at 108 Lockhaven Lane. And I just would like to ask the council to accept the unanimous recommendation of the ARC committee. They did their due diligence. They worked with the citizens and with the school, and I think they came up with a wonderful solution. So again, I would ask that you accept the recommendation for both items from the ARC committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Second on the list here is Trey Curry.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Okay, was there anybody else who wanted to speak? Those were the only two people set up for the items. Okay. Thank you very much. It is now 8:04, and we are closing the public hearing. Okay? All right. With that said, we have a motion on the table from Douglas. Mr. Gregory, I have a second, I believe, by Mr. Trevino. And since there's nothing else more to be said on this, I'd like to do a vote on it. All in favor? It is, thank you, the second item on the agenda is consider upon the recommendation of the Architectural Review Committee regarding the application from Antonian College Preparatory High School located at 6425 West Avenue, Legal Distriction, CB 5005A, Block 8, Lot 1, the proposal for the entrance stair to the Antonian Preparatory Center of Academic Elegant Excellence. For clarification, this is a construction portion of the ARC application. Mr. Vandewalde?
Yes, Mayor, just once again, Mayor and Council, you have the hard copy packages in front of you as well as the digital, and we have Mr. Mark Markowski with us to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Go ahead.
Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. This, again, is the site plan of Antonian, and the portion that's, I hit the right button here with the pointer. Nope. Let me back up here. The portion in the orange is the building, the Center for Academic Excellence, that we're showing on the site plan itself. West Avenue being along the bottom of the piece of paper. And the area dotted in the red triangle is the area where the trees are located and also where our new stair design is located, is proposed. That, again, is the building, kind of in the orange color. What's in front of that, there's an existing landing. There's a concrete land that's part of the original building that we're attaching this stair to at the top. And the stair leading downwards towards the service drive or the front entrance drive there that you see at the bottom of the picture. This new design, from what the original one was, it was a series of steps, a landing and a series of steps, which made the stairway come projected further into the grove of trees. And what we've done to push the stair, new stair construction back towards the building that allowed us to save the three trees that Kathy mentioned that had come off of one trunk that are at the intersection of the sidewalk and the stair, was to elevate the stairs coming in. Let's see if this works. Where's the pointer on this? Is that, is it working? Is that... Which one? Is it off? Is it pointing? Where are you at? No, I'm trying to point. This is where we talked about the stair redevelopment in terms of now it's a single series of treads. And what we've done to get from this point, which is an existing fixed point, to this point, which is an existing fixed point, we've elevated this section of sidewalk. We've ramped it up from this side, ramped it up from this side, added two steps here that got us to this level that then lets us to complete the stairwell. And what the elevated section also accomplished was not only minimizing the intrusion of the stair forward, but it also eliminated any type of excavation at the existing root zone. Actually, it's going to be an elevated section of sidewalk, which will certainly, well, this thing is moving fast, which will certainly keep the tree, it's jumping on me for some reason, the trees from being stressed during the construction of that sidewalk and stairwell. It jumps forward. Again, this is similar to the one we submitted last month, which is a concrete treads and risers, steel frame and metal railing. This is real similar to the one we presented originally. Again, this is a continual set-up stairs and not the intermediate landing. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will open a public hearing on this. Let's get a motion in a, let's go ahead and get a motion in a second, then we'll open the public hearing. Do you have a motion? Go ahead and move forward. Item seven, please. Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. All right. With that said, we're going to move into the open public hearing on this item seven, and it is now 8:06. We have one individual signed up to speak on this item, and it is Mr. Flores. Thank you, Mr. Flores. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Jackie? Thank you very much. Okay. With that said, we had our public hearing. It is now 8:07. So we're going to open this item up for, is there anybody else who wanted to say anything? Douglas? Frank? Ms. McLean? Ms. Scott? Mr. Trevino? Okay. We're going to call for the vote. One thing I want to say is, Mayor, I want to thank the residents for coming out and working with the school and getting this to the best of the ability of both parties. That's what the democratic process is all about, and I am glad to see that we have some kind of agreement here and everybody is happy as possible. So with that said, I'd like to call for the vote, please. All in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. We'll move on to item eight, please. Consider the approval of ordinance number 2017-0613, an ordinance amending Chapter 50 zoning, Section 50-564A of the Code of Ordinances, to modify the method of publication of Board of Adjustment Public Hearings. This ordinance reflects the recommendation changes from the Zoning Commission. Mr. Vandewalde?
Sure, Mayor. Council, you have this item again in front of you in hard copy on the dais. This item came to the council in the March meeting, and it was passed unanimously. However, afterwards, we discovered that we never held a public hearing on it, and so we sent it back to the Zoning Commission for consideration. Again, they held a public hearing, which no one spoke. However, we checked the box, and it's back to City Council to consider one more time.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go ahead and get a motion on the table in a second, please, to move this item forward. Do I have a motion for this item?
I so move the motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing, which is now 8:11. Okay, we're going to look at the sheet here, and it appears that no one has signed up for this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this item? Thank you. Okay. So it is now 8:12. We will close the public hearing. We have a motion on the table by Mr. Douglas, seconded by Ms. Scott, and we will start on the left this time. Mr. Trevino, did you have any comments, questions, or anything for Mr. Vandewalde?
Not at this time, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Thank you, Ms. McLean. Thank you. Mr. Paul. Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
After all these years, no.
25 years. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Okay, with that said, we're going to go ahead and vote on this item. This is item eight of the agenda. All in favor of this? It is unanimous, thank you, Council. We're moving on to item nine. Consider the approval of ordinance number 2017-0613A, an ordinance amending Chapter 44, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 1 and General Section 44-2, Table of Traffic Schedules, the Code of Ordinances by adding stop signs at the intersection of Gladiola and Blewett. Mr. Vandewalde?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this change to our ordinance was requested by one of the residents that lives in that arena or in that area in an attempt to increase safety at this particular intersection. So it's being put before the council for consideration. Chief Davis has some traffic data at that location, should the council be interested in hearing it.
Thank you. Chief Davis, did you want to go ahead and move forward with your data, please? It's okay, we'll take it out of RICO. Take it out of the Coffee Fund.
There we go. Perfect. We might have a little in there for Mike.
Okay. Sorry, that was a joke.
We were getting some complaints, and this is brought forward by a couple of residents and council members, and since we have a speed trailer and data collecting trailer, we've decided to deploy it to that general area on several different occasions. We have about nine days' worth of data for the Gladiola roadway. So I'm going to just hit the highlights for the council and the residents. Starting back in April 14th through May 25th, in no particular order, we ran our radar trailer on that street both directions about 12 hours a day. We like to deploy it about 6:00 AM in the morning, and we bring it in about 6:00 to 7:00 PM in the evening. Our average speed on Gladiola with a traffic count anywhere from 336 to about 725, depending on the day, averaged between 22 miles an hour and 25 miles an hour on average. We did have some peaks and some speeding, and we had some, obviously, some under-the-limit speeders. But on average, that street is seeing around 24, 25 miles an hour based on the number of cars. I don't know if 300 to 700 cars on that street is a high number. I don't, this is the first time we've had a trailer and collected this kind of data, but it is the baseline. I think 700 is, might be a little high in my opinion, but again, that's just my opinion, and it's up to the residents that live on that street to actually give us a more accurate depiction on what they think is going on versus high travel volume and low travel volume. So if council has any specific questions other than what I've provided, I can certainly try to help, but on average, we're looking at about 25 miles an hour on that street on average, and anywhere from about 300 to 700 cars on Gladiola per day, depending on the direction and what day it is, whether it was a Monday, school day, or a Monday holiday. We don't dictate that. We get the trailer out there when we can get the trailer out there. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Anyone?
I have one, if I can.
Sure.
When we do something like this, since it affects a specific area, did we canvass the neighbors in the area on Gladiola and say, "Hey, we're going to put a stop sign here"? Or how do we do this? Is it just one person coming and saying, "We want to do it"? What is our process?
Well, we don't dictate where stop signs go. This is generated, typically it bubbles up from the citizenry to a council member or a mayor or myself. We then make a move to try to collect data in this case and determine where we're at with it. I, my opinion would be, if you're asking, a stop sign on that street at that particular intersection would not be a bad idea. It's about midway on Gladiola, Blewett. We do get complaints. Obviously, we're not capturing every single day's worth of data. It couldn't hurt to have people slow down about midway on Gladiola and then obviously move forward. So it's a three-way stop. It certainly would assist us in slowing people down midway on Gladiola. But again, that's council's decision with the citizenry input. This is why we're here today.
Thank you. Any other questions for, yes, to...
The reason I'm asking the question is because a few years ago, a couple of my neighbors wanted to have speed bumps. Sounds like a good idea because they kind of come down our street pretty fast, too. Well, then I started walking around to the different neighbors. Now, I didn't have any youth council or whatever at the time, and I asked my neighbors, and half of them said, "You know, I don't want those there because I don't want to go over the bump." Well, you know, so that's why I was asking that specifically. And I know Brother Dooling is here, and Brother Dooling lives on Gladiola, and I'm going to guess he's probably a pretty good ear of the neighbors over there. Do you think this is a good idea? I'm going out of style here. I'm, you know, the...
Personally, I did not know about the agenda.
Yeah, Brother Dooling hadn't signed up, thank you. No, Brother Dooling, go ahead. That's a joke. Okay. Thank you. Brother Dooling, you can, you can come on up and...
I had a question for the chief, if I could help. The averages, I understand that, but did you get the highest speed?
Yes, sir. We, well, I do have that. I don't have that on this particular sheet. This is a Reader's Digest version of the data collected. But I can tell you, to give you an example, one particular day, we had 10% over the speed limit, 15% over the speed limit one day. The highest percentage over 30 miles an hour, now keep in mind, that could be 31 miles an hour, was 26%. I can pull the data from another source and get with you one-on-one and let you know what the peak top speed was.
My, it's a simple question. What happens in our street is most people drive nicely, except for two types of drivers, northeast independent school bus drivers, who recently seem to have slowed down. But historically, they go through Gladiola like a fatality. They're trying to avoid the signal, and they're racing up to the front of the road, and that's why. And the other is the intermittent speaker, who in my humble opinion is going well in excess of 40 miles. That's why I was wondering about the highest...
I have that number for you.
Can you guess that?
I don't, I don't think we had anybody in the 50s, in the 50 mile an hour range. I don't know the number.
So my guess is right.
You, yeah, there'll be some 40s in there, yes, sir.
Yes. And that's the problem. So I think something like this would solve it. I just think Blewett's a little close to Jackson Keller. It's not really in the middle, but it's on a curve, so maybe, you know, that's a good place for it. Personally, and I've discussed this with, I think, Ms. McLean and Mr. Paul, I'd like to try, round, but as just a temporary thing, to see if that had any effect. to see if that had any effect on the high speeds. The bulk of people, you know, I think it's fine, but boy, we gets up, but it really. And my real concern is we have those sidewalks, a lot of people are walking like myself, older citizens, dogs, children, and strollers, you know, and we have these people going, they're over forty miles. That's the big problem.
Well, I think your point about the, the street being a little close to Jackson Keller, I agree with. That's why I was, I guess I didn't realize that, when this came up. Seems to me like Trillium would be a better situation. And I just hate to put one in there and then have to move it, because we didn't hit it just right. That's all I'm saying. I'm all for a stop sign there. I think citizens, if that's what they need there, and, and the school buses, that's a problem.
Yeah.
I guess, though, actually, counting it, there are four blocks in this, too, so. And, and there is the curve. I, I guess it is closer, but because there's a curve, people come around that blind curve, like if you're walking towards Jackson Keller, and you're walking facing oncoming traffic, which I think is what you're supposed to do when you're walking, people can't see you, and they come whizzing around that corner at forty miles an hour. I mean, sometimes it's just downright fragrant, because it's a blind corner in that sense. So I think maybe Blewett would be the best.
Well, the, like I said, the, the location, Blewett and Gladiola was, was the, was the buzz intersection, if you will, originally on when this thing started. So that's why we focused in that particular area and collected the data. I'm, I'm, I'm at the will of the council.
Another thing to bring up, too, is if you moved it down a street to Trillium, if you had a backup at that stop sign, you blocked Blewett. And I'll, I'll explain after, Ms. Scott, why I brought this to council.
I actually went out to that intersection. I sat at all areas of that intersection where Blewett, you know, crossed Gladiola there. And it, my, my concern, as I sat there, is it is a blind curve coming around. If you're sitting on Blewett and you're looking to turn left onto Gladiola, it is a blind curve. So if you do have a speeder coming around there, you can't see them until they have hit you. So in looking at the other intersections along Gladiola, that was the position with that blind curve being right there. It made sense to me why the residents, and I'm not sure how many residents, because we're still in, not sure who brought it to the attention, but I can see why they brought it to the attention, because when you are sitting there waiting to turn right or left, you have to proceed very carefully, because it is a blind curve coming at you right there. So I just wanted to let you know, I've actually gone out and sat at that intersection and observed it. And, and like the gentleman said, it is a blind curve. Thank you.
In case there was any secret on who brought this to council, I did. And years ago, when Douglas and I were sitting on council together, we brought this when Mayor, I believe it was Smiley, was, was the mayor, and, and at that time, it got shot down. In the meantime, I have gotten numerous, as you can imagine, emails from residents in that area regarding the speed down that area, to the point where I would like to see it treated the extreme like we do Northcrest, where we make it one way from eight, eight in the morning till ten, and one way from six until four until six, which would stop the flow of traffic coming in from any ISD. Now, we affectionately call our little trailer "The Little Fella", and I'm wondering if maybe he became unplugged or something while, because I'm telling you, I've sat there many a time and seen cars in excess of forty, forty-five, fifty miles an hour. So that twenty-two miles an hour, I don't know where you got that figure, but, but, but anyway. So I brought it forward, and I thought that council should decide, once and for all, whether or not we're going to put a stop sign in that, in that three-way area there to stop that school traffic coming through in the afternoon. And personally, I think that Blewett is better than Trillium, because if you do get a backup on Trillium, you're going to block Blewett. So the street, which, you know, to me, just doesn't work. But it's up to council, of course. So with that said, is there anybody else that wanted to speak on this? Brother Dooling, do you have anything else to say, since you live right there?
Well, it's just, I, I wish. Let me do it properly. Brother William Dooling, two oh one Gladiola Lane, also in the house of two oh three Gladiola Lane, so. I just wish I had known it was on the agenda. I looked it online, and I just didn't see it. Ultimately, though, I think something like what the mayor is suggesting with the, the time things, in my own personal opinion, but I know you, to do what I'm suggesting requires everybody in five blocks to agree. Excuse me. But I have seen this in other parts of San Antonio. There's one, it's over there behind the, the Tech, Tech Dot Building, where there's neighbors behind and how they've arranged it, where they make it so the fire engines can get in, but traffic cannot get in. So in other words, you close, like in what you're saying, the cut-through that comes up Jackson Keller and turns right to cut through, that would be cut off permanently. And so you could only exit out onto Jackson Keller. You could not get in. We, the res- now, I've discussed this with the chief, and he's right. If you do that, you potentially just shift the problem to travertine.
Travertine.
And I understand that. So my, that's what I would prefer, but I understand that it has problems. My fallback on that is, I have seen in other places how efficient roundabouts can be. I was just in Seattle, Washington this last week, and where my cousin lives there, they just have, at all the major intersections, that's all they have. And they're so efficient, because you can't go around them fast. That's the essence of the roundabout, but it doesn't, doesn't stop the flow. My suggestion is to try one of those with a simple curbing, nothing that's permanent or anything like that, or, and, and might give it a whirl. And that actually was the corner I had in mind, that people would have to actually slow down, go around and, you know, continue on. I think they're more aesthetically pleasing, and you could add, add landscaping if you want, that sort of thing, but.
I like it. We can put a park there.
A park, yes. Any rate, those are my thoughts, but any help we could get on Gladiola, I think all residents would agree. I'm not speaking for them, but I think, I've talked to enough people, and Councilman Paul and others that, and Douglas and you, and others, that I think anything that would slow down that high speeder, and a stop sign definitely would, so.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. Appreciate your comments. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second on the table. Did anybody, Douglas?
Oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Oh, the public hearing, is it closed?
No, there's no.
Okay.
No public hearing on this one. It's just an item. Thank you. Did you have something to say?
Yep. Bob Jones lives in that area, and he told me, and I've seen it the last several years, the buses go wildly through that street. These are not little buses. These are big buses. And I think the mayor, oh, gosh, it must have been ten years ago on Northcrest, they had the similar problem of people zooming up and down the street, and it was fixed by having it a one-way between six and nine in the morning and in the evening. And I think if, if what we're trying to do is to stop the dangerous traffic from zooming up and down the street, as well as damaging the road, I think the idea might be better if it's made one-way during certain hours of the day, rather than a stop sign, because I think, I have a hunch the people driving the bus couldn't care less if a stop sign is there or not. But they may pay attention to a one-way thing, especially if the police enforce it for the first couple of weeks, when school commences in September or August, whenever school starts, and stops the traffic from zooming up and down the street.
Okay. Did you have a question?
So if we go ahead and put a stop sign there, but continue to look at other ways that we could handle this, one-way streets or roundabouts at some point, what is, what would be the cost if we put stop signs in, in now? I mean, that doesn't seem like it's that big of an expense, so.
No, it's, it's, it's not a huge expense to put in a stop sign, maybe a hundred dollars a sign, two hundred dollars a sign, so.
Yes, chief.
One other thing to consider, Councilman Gregory. One-way, certain periods of time, will affect a lot of our residents that are on those auxiliary streets that intersect with, with Gladiola. We've experienced that on Northcrest, because the resident wants to, you know, if it's a one-way and they want to get out of the neighborhood, whichever the direction may or may not be, you know, we're going to have to negotiate that and deal with that from a police perspective, an enforcement perspective. So, you know, can, a stop sign, hell, I think, assists, if we're going a direction. A stop sign assists everybody to include the residents, and then the one-way might impede some residents, more so than possibly a stop sign.
Thank you, chief.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I just add a comment to that?
Sure.
I grew up in a city with a racetrack, Santa Anita Racetrack. You might have heard of it. Huge crowds, fifty, sixty thousand people on a race day, coming through our city. So they had to change, just what the chief was saying, they had to make some streets one-way, coming in in the morning for the races, and then going out in the afternoon. But for those of us who lived there, it was the town of Arcadia, you got an RA sticker, Resident of Arcadia. So you, you could, you didn't have to follow those traffic regulations, and you would be flagged through, of course, by the police, and you wouldn't be ticketed, ticketed if you had a resident permit. I also, when I was in law school in Cambridge, Massachusetts, was the same thing. Couldn't park on the street unless you had a resident sticker. So there's ways to accommodate the residents while still keeping the less desirable element at bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. Okay, we have a, Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir. I'll make it quick, I promise. Going back to Ms. McLean's statement, I think that stop signs are probably the cheapest way to start off right now, and I think they're also the least minimally invasive, the, the most minimally invasive to the residents. And I think they also provide the least amount of resistance to our first responders if they're going to be going through there, and time is of the essence.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second on the table. We've gone through discussion.
Mayor, I don't think we have a motion yet.
Sure? We're on motion? Okay, do we have a motion for this item, please? Thank you, Frank. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. We've gone through discussion and also a bit of employee, uh, resident input. So with that said, is there anybody else who would like to say anything else? Thank you. All right, with that said, let's do a vote. All in favor? Four? All opposed? Thank you. It's four to one. Item pass. Thank you very much, counsel. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is, item ten, consider the approval of ordinance number two oh one seven oh six one three B, an ordinance amending chapter forty-four, the traffic and vehicles, Article One, in general, Section forty-four dash two, table of traffic schedules of the code of ordinances by adding no left turns from the parking lot from two, twenty-two twenty Northwest Highway, Military Highway, onto South Winston Lane at certain times. Mr. Vandewooldy?
Sure, Mayor and counsel, this is, this agenda item, as well as the next agenda item, were initially raised by the mayoral-appointed traffic committee a couple of weeks ago. Right after that, we met with the Castle Hills Church, the Christian School, as well as Basis, and considered their traffic circulation plan for that parking lot, which actually complements these actions, and they were also in support of them. For this particular agenda item, it would eliminate left-hand turns onto South Winston Lane from the church, church parking lot from six AM in the morning to six PM in the evening, Monday through Friday. There is more information on this in your digital packet to include a kind of a layout with distances marked for where the signs would be. And then the next ordinance, or the next agenda item and ordinance is tied to another item in that area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vandewooldy. Can I get a, this isn't a public hearing item. Can I get a motion and a second on the table to move this forward into discussion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, okay. All right, with that said, we do have a couple of people signed up for this item, but let's start on the right this time. Mr. Gregory, did you have any questions or comments regarding the item on the table, please?
I, six AM to six PM seems like an awfully long time, but I'd like to hear from anybody who lives on the street, what they think.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Paul, did you have any questions or comments for the item at this time?
I think Mr. Gregory has a good suggestion.
Okay, Ms., Ms. McLean.
Well, actually, I was happy to see that the times were this long. I was driving around with the kids one day over in the area around Lee High School at dismissal time, and noticed that it was well after four o'clock, and it was still extremely busy, and that no parking over there is only until four o'clock. And so I was glad, knowing the way schedules go at schools, that this was an extended period of time in the afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Ms. Scott, did you have any questions or comments for the item on the table, please?
I did a question, and perhaps this can be addressed by either people on the committee or Mr. Vandewooldy. Was it considered to mark the signs as school days only, or Monday through Friday, six to six, year-round?
We did not consider to do it during the school period only, so. And the reason we did make it six to six was exactly that, to cover any before-school or after-school activities. And after that, we knock it off, just in case there are some of the residents that happen to go to church or go to activities there that might want to come out, or on the weekends. And, and I would like to add something Ms. Crawford stated earlier, and that is that the traffic committee will meet again. We are awaiting the final plan from Basis. They were going to update some numbers. They were also going to engage with the Texas Department of Transportation on getting a new driveway permit off Northwest Military Highway, and they're still trying to run that to ground. So, but the intent is, I know there are several members of the committee here, is to, is to meet again in the not-too-distant future, whenever we get all that information.
Thank you, Mr. Vandewooldy. Mr. Trevino, do you have any questions on the item, please?
No, sir. I just wanted to comment that I agree with Ms. McLean as far as the six to six. This is designed to protect the residents and make sure that any traffic is minimally invasive. And this is one of the first measures that we're going to take, hopefully.
Do we have any idea, and I, I was unable to attend the first meeting due to a prior engagement, that I had to, do, do we have any idea whether the school has any activities after six PM?
We don't have any idea, sir, as far as all the activities it might have. I do know that they're not going to have any assemblies on that property, any after-school assemblies, from what I was told by Basis, but I don't know if the chess club is going to meet till six PM.
What about tutoring, or any other type of activities? Tutoring?
There, there may be. I mean, I would, I would presume there is going to be some activity at the school, but we can get their schedule if you'd like us to, and.
Mr. Brennan, if we go ahead and pass this this evening and it goes through, well, we can, of course, bring it up at any time, an executive or a regular meeting to amend it, as said. Thank you. Okay. Oh, we had some people sign up for this, and we'll go in order. Mr. Quentin Baker.
Evening, Quentin Baker, three oh four Fox Hall Lane. Thank you very much for proposing this ordinance. I think it's a wonderful idea. I would ask you to eliminate the time constraint completely and make it all times. It's not just the school that we face as traffic problems back on, on those streets. It's all the activities in the church. Come by any Sunday morning when church lets out and experience the cut-through traffic and the speeding that we experience. So it'd be wonderful for it to be permanently no-left turn out. If anything, longer hours are desirable, but I would say drop the time constraint completely and give the neighborhood some long-needed relief. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. We also had Amanda Mills.
Hi, my name's Amanda Mills, and I live at one two two Fox Hall Cove. As a member on the Traffic Control Committee, as has been stated, we've only gotten to meet one time on May thirty-first, the day after April Fool's Day. Basis met with the city on their proposed traffic plan, along with the Christian School. We've had no follow-up meeting. They have also not, as far as I know from the city, they have not come back with a plan, because their traffic within the parking lot, I believe, plan because their traffic within the parking lot, I believe, was crossing itself. And they were having to readdress that along with other things. There are two exits out onto Winston Lane. The original agreement that the Basis had with the city was that they would advise parents and may allow some vehicles exiting during any drop-off or pickup times, they must take a right-turn-only exit from the leased property onto Winston Lane and only from the egress point closest to Northwest Military. There are two, these, this is for middle school and high school students, not everybody leaves at four o'clock. They also have a hundred faculty and over a thousand students coming five days a week to this location. I agree with Mr. Quentin Baker. I do not agree and nor the committee has not gotten to finalize any kind of recommendations. I would hate to see that this time constraint be put on this. I agree, we don't need any left turns out of that driveway. You have just looked at an item where you've got all this traffic going through on Gladiola for cut-through traffic, speeding, not stopping, everything else. Other areas in this city are having these same problems. But we are now looking at this school coming in with over a thousand students and a hundred faculty and they will be leaving at different times. So I am not in favor of six to six. I would make it no left turn, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. Counsel, I'd like to advise that if anybody would like to amend this, now's the time to do it. We do have a motion and a second on the table. Need to go into discussion now, hang on. Okay. All right. We'll start on the right this time. Douglas, did you have any comments regarding the...
No.
Mr. Paul?
Got two things. When did Basis tell us they'd get back with their completed plan?
They didn't specify, Councilman, they had a few items they had to take care of with funds, not necessarily predictable timelines, but I have been in touch with them a couple of times since then and they know we're waiting for the results.
When does school start?
Pardon?
When does school start?
Oh, early September, late August, early September. I think that August twenty-second or twenty-third, I think, is what they said.
Well, the reason I'm bringing this up is I agree with the residents in the area. I don't think we can make a final decision on this until we get what they have to say. It's kind of like before, they always wait till the last and, and then all of a sudden there's a big surprise. So personally, I'd like to table this or put it, postpone it, whatever, until the next council meeting or even if we had to have a special one in the meantime, because this is important, we make a decision and it's going to stay. And we're asking for the input of the people on the traffic committee, which is majority liberal there, we need to give them the opportunity.
So, and I, here, I, Councilman, I would believe that what they recommended is to, what I've heard, is to eliminate the time, which I would support, and just leave it twenty-four seven, that that would be the condition, that enables, that gives us a little bit of time to go out and get the signs put up. Literally what this does is it helps us write tickets to enforce the settlement agreement that Basis has already signed, and they're in favor of it as well. So, so that, because they don't want their parents violating the settlement agreement any more than we do.
I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to, I'd like to have a recommendation from the committee that we can act on pro or con.
This was a recommendation from the committee.
Well, this wasn't a wholly recommendation, remember, I was there too.
I know, but it was one of the, it was, it was one of the recommendations.
There was no timeframe, there was no timeframe per se as far as the left turn, the right turn, and when you start giving a lot of consideration to their concerns on that, you know, I, I just think that we need to be sure before we act. And that's why I was asking when school starts, because we, we need, even if, as I say, it's important, even if we have to have a special meeting to discuss it, but I really would like to, I would press them, just say, hey, look, you know, we need it so we can get together and if you don't do it, we just, we have to tell you what we're going to do anyway. I, I don't know how to approach that, I haven't been in conversation with them. But I accept the fact that the committee has been asking for, and legitimately, we've been holding off figuring that we're going to get the additional, but they've been asking for a second meeting. And before I act on this, I would personally like to see a second meeting.
Mr. Paul, would you like to move your, your thoughts forward with any type of motion? Well, we already have a motion and a second on the table, are you withdrawing your motion? Who motioned to move it forward?
Yes, I do.
Who motioned to move it forward?
JR did, yeah.
Okay. Are you willing to pull your motion and order the table the item? Or not?
I have a problem if we put this off, because with an ordinance, it has to be published for a certain amount of time before it comes, becomes effective. So if we're not able to get this on the agenda because we're waiting for them, then we're left without an ordinance at all. So in my mind, it would be better to just scratch the time, amend it, scratch the time limit and say, too bad, you didn't get us any information, so we're just eliminating all left turns.
Do I hear an amendment to the item on the table, please? Do I hear an amendment to the item on the table?
I would like to amend the item on the table to delete the time period between the hours of six AM and six PM and just leave it at no left turns.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, we have an amendment on the table to go ahead and eliminate the time to, I guess, twenty-four seven, I guess, okay? So all in favor of the amendment? All right, it is unanimous, okay, let's go back to the original. So the original was to put item ten into effect, I'm not going to reread it because we've already read it, all in, no left turns, I believe, on South Winston Lane from the twenty-two-twenty Northwest Military Highway parking lot. All in favor? It's, you've already passed the amendment, so yes, striking certain times. Yes, okay, it's unanimous, is that correct, Douglas? Thank you. All right, good. We got through that. Okay, let's go to item number eleven, which is consider an approval of ordinance number two oh one seven dash oh six one three C, an ordinance amending chapter forty-four of the traffic and vehicles, article one in general, section forty-four two, table of traffic schedules of the code of ordinances by adding parking restrictions on the north side of South Winston Lane. Mr. Van De Woldy?
And this is the second agenda item that was initiated by the traffic committee. And it, again, this one is to install no parking signs along South Winston Lane, near those vacated lots that were recently going to be purchased by the Basis School to prevent parents from queuing up out there and letting their kids cross the street and climb in their cars. So this also was recommended by the, by the traffic committee. As Ms. Crawford pointed out, they also recommended putting them over on North Winston Lane on the underside of Northwest Military Highway. This, this ordinance or this motion would not capture that unless it was amended, so...
Thank you, Mr. Van De Woldy. Let's go ahead and get a motion on the table in a second, then we'll go into discussion along with the residents' comments. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Thank you, Mr. Paul. And Mr. Trevino? Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the table to move this item forward. And we do have two residents signed up for this, I believe, yes, we do. And Mr. Trevino, did you have any questions or comments on the item on the table, please?
I, I would like to entertain the idea of adding that, amending it so, to include South Winston.
North Winston.
Yes, to include North Winston, because I, as I understand that that isn't a, unofficially, the vehicles parked there and it becomes an issue anyways. Is that correct, Chief?
Chief? Chief, we've already got some parking going on over there, I don't know if you've noticed it, but some people who drive eighteen-wheelers, um, that live over in the Bel Air section over there, I see them there, you know, at least on the weekends for sure and during the night. So obviously, it doesn't matter as far as I'm concerned, but, I mean, it does matter as far as I'm concerned on the parking, but we, we already have parking there. So what would happen is on that section of road, there would be no parking at all for anybody, is that correct? With, with twenty-four seven? And we can legally do that?
Well, that's a, Mr. Brennan, question, we'll enforce it, but, you know, you all pass it.
What was the question, Mayor?
Mike, we have some, we already have some parking going on over there on North Matton Lane. It's two eighteen-wheelers that park over there and I've assumed that they live back in that area, back there by, or somewhere, they're leaving those eighteen-wheelers on the street there. So if we go ahead and put no parking signs up there twenty-four seven, can we legally stop them from parking there twenty-four seven?
Sure.
Okay.
And you, it may be illegal already, I don't know if they've checked that. And I have, I wasn't aware of the problem, but, Mayor, I did want to make one comment. The way this thing, agenda was presented, we were going to talk about parking restrictions on South Winston Lane. And I, I don't think it would be, y'all shouldn't be talking about, I mean, talk about it, but I don't think you should take any action to prohibit parking on North Winston Lane based on the way the agenda was set up. I think we need to bring that issue back because people in the public who might have been interested in parking or not parking on North Winston Lane didn't know, had no way of knowing, they thought it was going to come up at this meeting.
Okay. We have, yes, ma'am?
I hope that the whole, the real ordinance says which block, the one hundred block of South Winston, because there's a neighborhood going down where people live and their, their yard people park on the side of the street while they're doing the yards and their furniture delivery people park there while they're taking the...
Jackie, I think we're talking about North Winston Lane, which is the one across the freeway, is that correct?
No.
This, no, it was in South Winston Lane, I hope it doesn't mean all of South Winston Lane, I hope it's confined to the one hundred block.
Yeah, Jackie, we can show you a diagram, it's literally that area in front of where the, in front of those vacant lots. And, and it's clearly spelled out in the ordinance, it's, we've got a diagram that shows distances to the signs and everything, and it's, it stops before Mr. Carter's house even over there. It stops about at that drainage culvert, I believe, is...
Basically, that defines the area.
It doesn't include the Mendoza's houses either, it's just literally that section.
If it's not right. Mr. Brennan, should we go ahead and just table this item and...
Actually, I mean, you can if you want, but this is a recommendation that came up and I think everybody's probably supportive of it, you could go ahead and knock this one out and then address the next one next time, the North Winston one next time.
Okay, I'm confused, and I don't know why, but I am. So North Winston Lane is where, isn't it north of, of Military Highway?
Yes, it's across Northwest Military Highway from...
Okay.
Yeah.
It's that area between where Monster Golf and that piece, that lot is.
Mayor?
Yes?
We're talking about the north side of South Winston Lane.
Oh.
That's what this ordinance is about, the north side of South Winston Lane.
I get it, I get it. Why in the world would anybody park there?
Pick up their kids or let them off.
Good point. Yes, sir.
I think we ought to be sure that the signs point where the, where the no parking ends.
They, they will.
It wouldn't hurt to also have that no parking sign that I've seen in North Carolina that says, don't even think about parking here. So...
We have a motion and a second, is there anybody, Amy, do you, excuse me, Ms. McLean, do you have anything you want to say?
No, I have no comments.
Thank you, Mr. Paul?
Chief has, huh?
Oh, Chief.
For clarification, for the residents, and this is going to clean it up real quick, I measured Win, South Winston Lane from intersection to intersection, we're talking Northwest Military and South Winston to Castle in South Winston, and measured the points of the sign placement for no parking. It did not interfere with the residents, Mr. Carter, Mr. Mendoza's, he can have guests parked there. This is specifically for the section of the open field area where most likely that citizens or parents might queue to drop off their students. And in the event that the signs get knocked down, as long as we have an intersection in Winston and Military, we know we have a point to start from and to replace the sign in the future.
Thank you, Chief.
The mayor's not here, so I'll ask a question, Mr. Brennan. What's to prevent people from parking on the other side of South Winston? Oh, I parked, I parked over there.
Locking the roadway.
Well, there's, it doesn't have a no parking sign over there.
You'd be blocking roadway, yeah.
Even though there's a no, there is no, no parking sign on that side of the street, you can't park there?
Okay, where are we at? Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment? I'm for this ordinance to at least get the ball rolling, then we can adjust, we can, we can alter, we can do whatever as we go along, look at the situation and do what we think is best.
Mr., we have two people signed up for this. Are, are you through? Ms. McLean, everyone? We're through. Quinn?
I had to do it, it was just too tempting. Hang on, I'm looking for the clock.
This is not a formal public hearing.
Shall I do it for you? We'll open the public meeting at eight fifty-six?
Yeah, no, this, this ordinance does not require a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Quinn.
All righty.
Time suspended.
All right. Very much in favor of this ordinance, I'm very glad to see it. We're extremely concerned about renegade traffic from Basis as we've conveyed in previous meetings and we very much see it there other campuses. I would ask to strengthen the ordinance by making no parking on both sides of the street. While there is a curb on the south side, as we've seen in looking at their Ramsey campus, the parents just park on the street, okay? So why not just make it both sides of the street and clean this up and remove the ambiguity of which side of the street is parking and which side is not?
Um, counsel, counsel, why wouldn't we do that? Chief? Dover? Okay.
Right now, from what I understand, the no parking signs are only along the empty lots, correct? They're only along those five empty lots? Because if you have the, on the north side, because if you have the no parking signs along the entire street, then you're blocking people from having their yard men park on the street in front of their house or, you know, if they're having deliveries delivered. So the, no parking signs are only no parking in front of the empty fields.
But what if, let me ask you a question, I'm just asking this question. So you have all these cars coming out on the left hand to make a left-hand turn, not allowed to make a left-hand turn, all making a right-hand turn, and the mothers, I mean, or, excuse me, the mothers or dads are, are parking along that, that part of the road? So you've, so you've narrowed it down to one lane?
Yes, but there are no signs on the south side of South Winston proposed right now, it's just the north side of South Winston that are being proposed in this ordinance.
I don't understand why we didn't on both, because what if they park there and jam up the street?
There's a curb along that side, they can't pull off on the side of the road and park, and what the chief was saying earlier, that there's, it's hard, it would, they'd be impeding traffic flow if they were to just sit on the side of the road right there, it would basically choke it down to one lane all the way down.
So I'm just asking, and I'm being the devil's advocate here, why, why wouldn't...
Like a red curb, like a no parking curb there?
Pardon?
On the, on the south side of South Winston, is it like a red curb, no parking curb along there? No, it's just a regular...
It's not red, but we could paint it, I guess, if we wanted to.
Chief? I could see mothers stopping, excuse me, I could see mothers or fathers stopping there along the, on the road and blocking traffic and they don't care.
I agree with the mayor, I think people will park wherever they want to.
Mayor?
I have to agree with the mayor, I do, I'm, I'm a mother who regularly, you don't have to shut it off, I can see that happening as well on the other side, but does that need to bring brought back?
I, I don't think so. I think you all could, this one addresses a certain space on the north side of the block. You could add to this or amend this ordinance by adding all of the block on the south side. So you'd have the certain location on the north side, all of the locations on the south side.
There's, there's a question with that, though, if you did all the block on the south side, again, you're affecting neighbors, I would think from, you know, we, so we're really going to have to come back or something because we've got to do the same type of measurements, because if, if you put no parking in front of those houses, Chief, am I off-base here, where...
So you're going to have a yard man parked there at three o'clock in the afternoon blocking traffic for a thousand cars coming out of there?
The south side of Winston...
And you're not going to do anything about it? I'm just asking, I'm being facetious.
The south side of Winston Lane is just up against the church parking lot, correct? The entire, that entire block of South Winston?
There are three residents, there is Mr. Jeff Lyne, right on the corner at one forty South Winston.
There are, there are homes on the south side of that one, their block of...
There are, there are homes on the south side of that one, that block of South Winston Lane. At the corner of West Castle Lane in South Winston, there's Mr. Jeff Vines here at the corner. And then there is Jorge. And then there is the inlet to the three homes to include the mentally challenged people, and J.D. lives back there. And then there's one more home that used to be church-owned. It's tan brick. And so there's those sequences of homes along there before you get to the church property, even on the south side.
So saying that entire south side, no parking, would block some residents?
What, Mayor, counsel, why don't we just select the same reference points that we've already got identified in the ordinance for both sides of the road, both north and south side, and then it takes the residents out of the mix, the areas in front of the residents' homes, and just covers those lots? Brother Dilling? So you just say both sides.
It's just a point. I'm, I'm an old teacher, and it's just a point of verbiage and usage here. But down the road, this could cause you problems. You keep referring to the north side of South Winston Lane. There is no such thing. Winston Lane runs north and south. The two sides of it are east and west.
But in the traffic.
As, as in the map here, East Castle Lane intersects South Winston. So where the church property is, that's the east side of South Winston. And where Cruz and, and all the other people live is the west side.
So Mayor, get us, to get out, to get us out of this discussion about whether south and, which way it runs, can we just substitute, instead of on the north side of South Winston with on both sides of South Winston?
If I may, that was my point. There is no such thing as the north side of South Winston Lane.
Let's take it out of the verbiage and just say on both sides of South Winston at those locations. I think that covers everybody's concerns on this.
I'm all for that. Quinn, Quinn, you okay with that? Okay. Good. All right. So is anybody going to push forth the amendment to just do it?
I would like to amend the ordinance to delete the word "the north side of." So it, so the ordinance reads, "Is amended by prohibiting parking on South Winston Lane between a point five hundred and fourteen feet west, et cetera."
Okay. Sounds good to me. Second? My second. Thank you, Mr. Paul. Of course.
The residential homes that are on the side that the church is on, on South Winston Lane, they may have, they are homes there, and you may, somebody may have a party during the day. So can you limit the no parking, so where it doesn't apply to where residential homes are?
Douglas, although I agree with you, and, and I don't live on that street, but I'm, I'm telling you, if, if you amended it other than, than what you had, and of course, you can't tell the chief of police not to, not to write a ticket in a, in a situation where you might have a yardman stop for five minutes, or I, I do understand that. But, I mean, I could see the potential of, you know, these, these people coming to pick up their kids, stopping, stopping, impeding traffic, people honking, who knows? But, I mean, I, I agree with you. I mean, the Mendoza's do have their rights, and the Victory Car lot on the corner has their rights. But I, I would hope that if the yardman came, or the, that they would pull off the street and that, you know, maybe, maybe Chief, you would. Apply, hey, there you go. Apply common sense on if they parked on the grass over there or something, you know, while, in a situation. How's that?
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I guess this is directed towards Mr. Brennan and Chief. Is there any kind of potential legal issue if somebody's not parked and they're still in the car? Maybe no stopping?
Well, I'm all for that on the amendment as stated. Did we get a second on that?
Paul.
Paul, yes, okay. Anybody else before we go to the vote?
Real quick, it just says in the ordinance, it just says prohibiting parking. Did you say parking includes it stop standing, or is it just parking?
It's my understanding that when that word is used, it means stop standing or parking. But I'll make sure that when we do the final version of this, if that's what y'all are intending.
Because it says specifically just parking.
It, it does say that, but I think that means that, the other. But I'll make sure it does when we draft, draft the final version.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, when all this gets rolling and everything, could you be over there to encourage the situation? Okay, thanks. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second on the table. All in favor? On the amendment?
What, what was the amendment?
The amendment is no parking at all on South Winston Lane.
We're just dealing with the signs this time. This is the signs.
Is this, are we voting for just the signs?
And the no parking.
We're voting for no parking on South Winston Lane.
Side of South Winston?
Twenty-four-seven in the areas designated by the city manager and the chief.
I amended the ordinance to delete the words "the north side of." So it's either side of South Winston Lane on, between those points that Chief Davis measured.
There is no north side.
Right. Ms. McLennan, so I did, in fact, get your amendment, and that is exactly what it says. And it, I do have from the points that are listed on Chief's traffic schedule.
And, and looking at Google Earth, the, the no parking that's blocking those lots that, that were Basis wanted to build on that space, those five lots, do not align with the actual church parking lot itself. So if you include no parking on the other side of the street from those lots, you are going to block one, two, three, two, at least two residential homes from having parking in front of their residences, simply because the church parking lot and those fields do not align directly across the street. I've pulled up Google Earth.
That's exactly right. And we'll also block the Mendoza's from parking in their lot. And I think the chief agreed. I think the chief agreed that, that he would use common sense when it, what was the phrase you used, Chief?
Officer discretion.
No, it was something else. Common sense if a yardman or somebody like that pulls up in the front. You wouldn't want people parking in front of those areas anyway.
Well, if the, the distances we have in here don't prohibit parking in front of those houses you were talking about, it just prohibits parking on both sides of the street between the distances specified.
Right. And those distances specified appear to, if we cover both sides of the street, appear to block two residences.
So I think what we can do is we'll go get, we'll go get, just like we've demarcated the areas with measurements, we'll do the same thing on the southeast side of North Winston. I'm sorry, Brother Dilling. And we'll also, the Mendoza's are already out of the equation, Mayor. Just so you know, that section in front of the Mendoza's house is not part of the, the no parking area. It literally is the lots in front, as Moretta pointed out. And then we're also going to go in, because Ms. Scott brings up a good point. If we use the exact same datum, the, the data points, then we're going to block off some residents on the east side, on the other side of, of South Winston. We will go out, we'll mark them off, and we'll stop it at the corner of the church.
So what about, let's back up just for a second from the Mendoza's property. Okay, I understand the east side of the property. So the yardman pulls up at three o'clock in the afternoon, blocks that side of the highway?
He's, he can do that, because there is, there is not a no parking sign there. He is servicing, he's parked in front of the Mendoza's house. There is not a no parking sign in front of the Mendoza's house.
Should we put a sign there that says that they can't park there during designated time, as we do on South Garden View? You're going to cause a jam over there if you don't, if you don't deal with it right, right now. How are you going to do? You pull, will you pull up, what about the guy on the corner that owns the?
There's a way to fix it.
Well, the way to fix it is with timeframes.
No. Mr. Brennan, would it still be a specific enough ordinance if we deleted all the references to feet and just said parking in, not in front, somehow we worded it to where we were excluding the residential properties?
But you still have the situation of the Mendoza's being able to block traffic on that street.
I was going to say, they're going to park in front of those houses then if you don't have no parking signs, that even on the south side of Winston. You know, fortunately, or hopefully, this is only going to be like for eight or nine months. But, and then we can always get rid of this ordinance and take the signs down, so we don't be so restrictive. But if you don't do it the same way along both sides, that will affect three or four houses in there. They're all good neighbors. They'll go down the street and, and next door or something, and on the corner, hey, Wayne, open up your, your gate, let them park it there. But they're, they're go, if you don't have it there, they're going, they're going to probably park on that side of the streets if it doesn't have a no parking sign, even if it's in front of a house.
Well, why couldn't you just put timeframes in that particular section?
We could put them in all the way up and down if you want.
You can't, you know, this is getting kind of, kind of squishy right now, I think. In answer to the question about the feet, the reason that's in there is to provide a, a, these are criminal statutes, so you have to be able to enforce them beyond a reasonable doubt on a criminal level. And that's why you need precision about the areas that you can't park and the areas you can. And if the both-side thing that, that they, we have precision about on the feet doesn't work on the other side of the street, I think they need to come back with the right numbers for the two sides of the street to where we can make an enforceable ordinance.
You withdrawing?
Yes, I withdraw my amendment.
I make a, I make a motion. We table this ordinance until the July city council meeting, when we have specific areas that we want to have no parking signs.
Thank you. Counsel, we tabling this item until next time? All in favor?
I will say that we need to expedite another meeting of the citizens. And, and, you know, if Basis doesn't want to cooperate, we're just going to do it, and, and they can, they can come along afterwards. But there are issues here, obviously, but we need to do something on both sides of the street. I agree with that.
Well, you know what? We have enough, we have enough executive meetings and things where we could tack this on to any meeting coming up before July. I'm sure we're going to have.
If we don't, if we don't table it, if we vote tonight, we've at least got one side of the street done.
That doesn't fix the problem, though.
We already voted to table it.
No, we haven't. Well, yes, we have.
Yeah, we have.
It was four to one. Are you going to vote for or against the table?
Against.
Okay. Four to one.
Okay, so who seconded that? I missed the second.
Mr. Paul.
Okay.
Mr. Paul made the motion, and who seconded it? Oh, okay, yeah. And then he did. With, we have one nay vote. Okay. All right. And kind of a trailer on that, I think we should, if we, if, if Basics could get in here right away, we could, you know, we could tack that on to any of the executive meetings that we have, to go ahead and get that off the table. So, all right, where are we at? All right, we're at item, oh, twelve. Appoint a member of, to serve as mayor pro temp for the period of one year. I'm appointing Mr. Trevino as, as the mayor pro temp and asking counsel to, to accept that as an appointment. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Do I have a second?
Paul seconded. Mr. Paul.
Boy, he really likes you, JR. He really likes you. Mr. Paul has a second. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Did you vote for yourself, Mr. Trevino? Thank you. He voted for himself. A good man votes for himself. Okay. Here we go, item number thirteen. Consider a appointment, we're nearly through this. Consider an appointment of a city treasurer, and I appoint Douglas Gregory. I don't think I have to tell y'all. I sleep better at night knowing that Douglas is always asked his opinion when we go for treasuries, or CDs, or whatever it is. He's been that for a number of years. He's obviously in the business, knows what he's doing. So I appoint him. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Douglas, okay, we, thank you for serving again. All right, let's go to item number fourteen. Consider appointments to the Architectural Review Committee. Mr. Van De Wally, did you have a comment on that, please?
Just the fact that we have five board members and two alternates on this committee, Mayor, that we need to appoint.
Okay. What I have here, and these are items that have been brought in by the council members through the city secretary. I did not poll counsel. With the Board of Adjustment, it's Tom Reichenberger as chair, Bonnie Hopkey as?
We're on, yeah, we're on ARC first, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. How'd that happen? Oh, yeah. Maybe I'll read this time. Jack Joyce is chair, Barry Middleman, Barry Middleman is retaining his spot, new member Juan Solis, a David Kilgore, and Matt Daggett. We have two open alternate positions. Does anybody have anybody who is, who would like to serve on the ARC, the ARC?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And I found out today that I can nominate Jason Scott for the ARC committee. Even though he is my husband, it's not a paid position, and I don't have a paid position. So therefore, am I correct, Mr. Brennan? Okay. He's a licensed registered architect. He's certified as a construction specifier. He's a construction contract administrator, and he's a lead accredited architect. So I would like to consider his appointment to the ARC.
Thank you as an alternate. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else on this group of people that we'd like to, like to put in as an alternate? Okay. Who? No, we don't have to fill it this time. And so with that said, so we have Jack Joyce as a chair. We have Barry Middleman as a, as the member. We have Juan Solis as a member. We have David Kilgore as a member. We have Matt Daggett and Jason Scott as a proposed member. Do I have a, a? Thank you, Frank. A second? Good. All in favor? Thank you. If you'll notify your husband, he's on the board now. I'm sure you'll see him. Okay. Can't wait.
Excuse me, it has to do with all this. Last, last month, I wrote in the reporter an article saying, or maybe it's two months ago, last month, but that the, the mayor's going to be appointing committee members. And please, please, anybody interested, step forward. Unfortunately, I had two people step forward for Board of Adjustments, both very qualified, so I have to pick the one that came first. Same thing with a, a couple of other ones. Oh, the, the crime control. So the point is, we're reaching out and asking new people. We're not trying to just pick friends and neighbors. We want people, Architect Review Board was very specific, I mean, very, it, it takes a different skill level. The rest of them takes common sense. Unfortunately, it's not so common anymore. But anyway, I'll see you.
Thank you, Frank. I'm going to reiterate what he just said. In the, in the last election, there was a lot of things brought up, and that was the first thing I did, was, was reach out to everybody who was opposed to anybody in the last election. And, or, these boards are, these boards are not necessarily politically driven. And I would hope that people would take the time to serve. I roped, I roped Jackie into it, and she, she, she serves. And thank you very much, Jackie, for your, and I appreciate that. Okay, we're moving on to the next item, which is the Board of Adjustment. And it is the five board members and four alternates. Counsel supplied me with, Tom Reichenberger is on, is on that board, and we would like to go ahead and keep him as the chair. Bonnie Hopkey- Bonnie Hopkey is on that board. Someone that, uh, I and several others nominated was Brother Dooley. He happens to be here with us tonight. Bruce Smiley Caleb has asked to be on the board. Walter Bueller, Jackie Ackley as an alternate. She has agreed to be on the board and we have three alternates that would, uh, be on that very important board. That board is the, uh, the way I like to put it is the, that's where I started off, is the only board in the city that, that basically does not need council approval. So whatever that board says goes and the only way we can stop it is through a court order. So it's a very, it's one of the most important boards that we have in the city. And, uh, we have three alternates open, as Mr. Gregory, uh, commented. We don't have to fill them tonight. We do have, uh, a full sitting board with one, uh, alternate, so. Counsel?
You mentioned three people, but five people are already there.
Yes, five people are already there as members.
Are the people you mentioned, Bruling, this, the former mayor, Mr. Smiley, and Jackie, are they, well, are they?
Jackie is an alternate.
She's an alternate.
She agreed to be an alternate.
So she, she's listed on the paper that we have here as apparently one of the first five members.
Look in the bottom of your, uh, pile there, please. The bottom of your pile. We revise that as of today.
We got someone else. Thank you.
Counsel?
Oh, I see. All right.
Counsel, I would, I would ask that during this next month, if you could, if you could talk to your neighbors, I've, I've given, uh, Mr. Paul some ideas of some people who live on Shalimar that are interested, uh, that you bring them forward at the next meeting as far as alternates are concerned. We do need three alternates. And, uh, with that said, uh, I would like to go ahead and move forward with the five members and the one alternate we have. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Thank you, Douglas. All in favor? Thank you very much. It is, the next board is one dear to my heart, believe it or not. Uh, and we're extremely lucky to be able to have, uh, the members on this board. Every single one of them, with the exception of one, is, is currently on the zoning board. It's a very important board in our city. Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, for volunteering at your service again and you being the chair. Uh, we have Jana Baker. Jana is, is also on that board. Tom Aiken, who has been on that board. Mike Flynn has agreed to come back. The new person, and you, you girls jump in anytime, uh, would be Scott Gray, uh, who has returned. Tom Fentress and Don Rochelle as alternates.
May I make a comment, Mr. Mayor, sir? There have been two chairmans of this zoning commission as long as I've been here. And I think Mr. Isbrand has been one of the finest chairman we've had. I think we're very, very, very lucky to have him. And he, he, he and, uh, Mr. Schnoll, when he was there, we've just been extraordinarily lucky with these two men. Very lucky. And I, I just can't see the zoning commission without them. And I can't see it without you as chairman.
Thank you, Douglas. I personally asked Mr. Schnoll to at least be an alternate on this board and he kindly, uh, said that he had others, that, that he couldn't bring it into his schedule at this time. But I have to agree with you a hundred percent. And Joe, uh, I think, I think you and I even talked about that, if, if Mark would come back as an alternate. But he was unable to do so. With that said, we have the five members, Joe Isbrand, Jana Baker, Tom Aiken, Mike Flynn, and then Scott Gray returning with Tom Fentress and Don Rochelle as the alternates. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. The next board is, uh, one that, uh, runs with the mayor, I believe, and it's the CCPD. We have two terms that are up. Kim, you have written out, uh, letters or emails to the people thanking them for their service. And anybody who wanted to re, to, uh, continue on that board, uh, I believe was, was notified. I am, I am, I am, uh, two people came to mind and it was Glenn Cross and Tom Hurst. Tom, uh, for those of you who don't know him, Frank, did you wanna mention something about Tom Hurst?
Sure. Tom lives, and his wife Sally live over on Fox Hall. He's, uh, retired. He's, uh, very interested in, uh, police work. He's done a lot of, uh, he, he, he's involved in his neighborhood and that's what, that's what we need. Uh, they've been, they've lived there, uh, about nine years, I guess. And he stepped forward and asked if he could be, uh, considered for this, 'cause he'd like to start getting involved. Which, uh, again, this is a board that I had two people come to me and ask, ask if, uh, to nominate him and I, I took the first one. They were both very qualified.
Okay, so it's Glenn Cross and, and Tom Hurst. Again, it runs in succession to the mayor. And, uh, those are the two to be replaced.
Mr. Mayor, I thought there were three people up for appointment. Isn't, aren't there seven members and they're staggered terms? So there should be. Only two? My notes from when we talked said that there were three people up for appointment. Are we, are there only two?
I can go back and double check, but I, I thought that in my records that there was only those two that were.
Do we have alternates on that board?
No.
No.
No, you do not.
Mr. Brennan, is there a prohibition from a member of council to be on that committee?
Nope, 'cause I was on it.
Well, I have somebody I'd like to appoint if there's another one open.
You know, uh, there's a general law requirement that, uh, the city council is not supposed to appoint its, a member of itself to a subordinate board. So I, I would say maybe Tim was, but I don't know how that one got through, but.
I don't wanna be on it again. Thank you.
Is it's not a subordinate board.
It's subordinate in the sense that you appoint the members.
But it's separate in terms of budget and everything for the city.
Counsel still, counsel still has to approve the budget.
It's subordinate as far as.
I was a voting member when it started for several years.
Counsel still has to approve the budget.
I was back in the good old days.
Would you like?
Did you wanna nominate somebody if there is, or, well, I guess we, we could bring it back if there is.
Or we can do it and then if there, if I go back and find that it is, then we can notify them and we're, we're okay? Or do we need to wait since?
We can wait.
I think it'd be better to wait.
Okay.
Till you're clear.
Yeah. I would hate to tease somebody. Uh, okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have, uh, we have, uh, Glenn Cross and we have Tom Hurst. And do, for the CCPD. All in, uh,
Have a motion.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Do I have a second? You're exactly right. That is my appointment. So you know what? I'm appointing them, both of them. So moved. Thanks for agreeing with what you didn't have to vote on. Okay.
Y'all, y'all didn't vote on that?
Well, they, it's an appointment. It's not a vote, or is it an appointment?
I think it needs to be confirmed by the council.
Okay, let's go ahead and confirm it. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to confirm.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Second? Thank you, Ms. McLean. All in favor? It is confirmed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Okay, wait a minute. We have ten pages here, you know that? Okay, so let's move on to item number eighteen. This is consider the appointment of a new city secretary. Mr. Van de Walde?
Yes, Mayor, we're gonna pass on this. Um, we, um, we held interviews yesterday and, um,